Evening. The October 23 meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would a clerk please take the roll?
I do see him online, but councilmember Revelle?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns. Oh, he's also online.
I'm here as well, Clarence Mendez.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Sufferton.
All right, so we have a full complement. Two people are participating remotely this evening. The first item on our agenda is the public hearing for the 2024 proposed budget. So just to be clear, there are, there were two sign up sheets for public comment this evening. So I think those of you who were signing up in person hopefully found it straightforward to sign up for the portion of public comment that you intended to. For the online, it's perhaps, we'll do our best up here to kind of slot people into the appropriate public comment. And there will be three minutes per person for the budget hearing public comment. And so pursuant to the Illinois compiled statutes in section 1-11-5 of the city code, the Evanston City Council is conducting a public hearing today to consider the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget document. The purpose of this hearing is to allow for public input on the proposed budget document. Staff has presented an overview of the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget, sorry, staff has presented an overview of the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget on October 16, 2023. And this presentation, along with the proposed budget, is available at cityofevanston.org/government/budget. I hereby convene the hearing of the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget presentation open. So we'll begin that hearing with the public comment portion, which will in turn begin with those who signed up in person, beginning with Len Lampkin, who will be followed by Eric Passit, and then Ray Friedman. So the first speaker is Len Lampkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman. Tonight I want to talk about participatory budgeting and why it should be included in this year's budget. With a $400 million-plus budget, you could afford to put 1% or $4 million for participatory budgeting. I know some of the Aldermen came to some of the idea collection events. I went to several. The main reason why I'm excited about, besides being on the leadership and being a budget delegate, was to watch the young people of Evanston. At Fleetwood Jordan, I saw a room full of African-American young people, predominantly from the 5th Ward, who got engaged, some for the first time, in what goes on in our city, and advocating for the programs that they wanted. One of those programs is one of the seven that was selected by the residents of this city. Should not we continue this process? There were 500 young people who voted from Evanston High School in this process. That's more than sometimes vote in some of our city wards for school committee. Think about that. We need participatory budget if we want to encourage the young people to continue to be involved in our city. Some of these young men and young women will be the future city councilors, might be the future mayor, if we continue to encourage them to be involved. So that's the main thing. The other part is that we can afford $4 million to see what, there were projects that weren't funded that were very well, we needed, such as more money for senior services, more money, a refugee welcoming center, a center for the Haitian, the center for the Asian Pacific Islander community. These are things that our city needs if we're going to be the welcoming city we put forward every year in our ordinances. Participatory budget, engaged people from every ward and every sector of our community. The last thing I'm going to say is this is Fire Prevention Week. We need money in this budget, more than for the fire department. We need money in this budget so that every resident of this city has a good, modern smoke detector, a good, modern carbon monoxide detector, and a good fire extinguisher. That won't cost a whole lot of money. Let's make it happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eric Passit, who will be followed by Ray Friedman.
Hi, my name is Eric Passit. I'm the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos and a resident of the 4th Ward. I also signed up online by accident. I meant to sign up for this meeting, not for the city council meeting. So I'm here to speak, kind of, I wouldn't say against the budget, but against the proposals to raise property taxes, let's say, costs for, or charges for water and other utilities. Every time you, every time, let's not say you personally, but every time the city raises the rates on that stuff, or the property taxes, it kills affordable housing in Evanston. Because as landlords, when you raise taxes by 7.9%, the majority of it goes towards us, as landlords. The biggest portion of the property taxes are paid by landlords, which in turn, we're going to pass it on to residents. And the buildings we represent are not the most expensive buildings. They are more reasonable. So now you just kill affordable housing by doing that. You know, I know you mentioned that, Alderman Reed, you mentioned that last time in the last meeting. I did read that, which I was appreciative of. And my, my is, we find either a way to cut the budget, or different ways to attract more businesses to be here to have more revenue. You know, maybe, you know, there's a lot of ways we can do that. You can still see there's tons of vacancies in downtown Evanston. If we had more stores filling them, or more restaurants filling them, we might not need to raise our taxes. And find a different way to do it. Again, if you raise the taxes and we continue to do it every year, it's going to force us to continue to raise the rents. And I think it's, and, or people who are not in, let's say, in the more modest areas in Evanston, it's going to push up their property taxes. So it just keeps on pushing more and more people out of Evanston, not attracting them to it. So I'm upset. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'm disappointed that last Thursday I sent an email out to everyone asking two questions. What's the difference between public comment and public hearing? The next question is if there'll be other, if there'll be a discussion tonight on the budget, or is there only one discussion with residents for the whole year on the budget? Tonight, on your agenda for city council, you have five different items for general obligation bonds. One is a TIF, using a TIF. The other one is, of course, increase the water, 17.5%. And, and then you have proposal to buy four vehicles for almost half a million dollars using funds from 2024 budget. And I think that's the third time that I've seen proposals to use money from the 2024 budget. So my public comment is, money is an integral part of all of our lives. We need money to survive. Some need more than others. Some live within their means and too many do not. Most of us need, well, most of us need to borrow money at some point or another, to finance a car or a house, big ticket items. The money raised in any city, town, village, is to serve the community, all of the community, with input from residents on how our money is spent. Using the participatory budget plan was an excellent idea, to have residents involved in how and where to spend our money. I've never seen a situation where you decide how many projects you want to do in any given year, and then try and figure out where you're going to get the money from. It's a disaster. And it's happened every year. We would hope that in most cases, a community would figure out, as I just said, I'm repeating, it seems that in Evanston, we do our finances backwards. So we need to figure out how much money, like the participatory budgeting, figure out how much money we have, and then what projects you want to get done for that given year. Having seven different items here where you're borrowing money, okay, it's costing us money to borrow this money. It doesn't make sense. We've seen, as city of Evanston budget grow 50 to 60 million per year for the last three years, okay, and borrowing money every month to pay the bills. You need to ask yourselves, are you helping the community or hurting it by borrowing every month to pay for projects, employees, studies, consultants, vehicles, and giving money to special interest groups? Please don't spend money we don't have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes the list of people who signed up on that sheet to speak in the budget hearing. So now we'll move on to those who signed up online, and to the best of my ability to tell, signed up to speak in the budget hearing in person. That will begin with John Kennedy, who will be followed by Kaylee Kavanaugh.
Mayor Biss, distinguished alderpeople. My name's John Kennedy. I've been a resident for 40 years, and I live in the 3rd Ward. What I'd like to do tonight is speak to the debt assumptions contained in the budget. As background, the city set a limit of $155 million for supported GO bonds, tax-supported GO bonds. This limit was increased, as you may remember, to pay for the Crown Center back in 2018. Of note, the council and the staff have held back increasing debt for the past two years. And our debt at the end of 2023 will be $120 million. That's down from $129 million at the beginning of the year. All very good, and I applaud you. The 2024 budget, as the prior speaker just mentioned, indicates that the city wants to borrow another $24 million. That will put us very close to our agreed-to debt limit. But this picture radically changes the following two years. The five-year CIP plan indicates the intention to issue new GO bonds of approximately $224 million in 2025 and 2026, increasing the total debt of GO bonds to $379 million. This is over 150% of our current upper limit. Now, this increase is largely due to three projects. One, a new civic center is to be built for $64 million. Two, a new police and fire department needs to be built for another $64 million. And third, a renovation of the facility service center for $41 million. This totals $169 million if everything came in on budget, as we know, it never really does. Or 75% of the GO bonds that the city intends or is planning to issue in 2025 and 2026. I urge the council to look beyond this year's line item budget and consider the extraordinary expenses that are being planned by the staff that nobody really wants. And the debt that you're going to leave will increase for every man, woman, and child to $5,500 bucks in the city if this plan continues on its present course. If you ask your constituents if they would rather have a fancy new civic center and a new police-fire department headquarters, or less taxes and less debt burden, I think you know what their responses would be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kaylee Kavanaugh.
Hi, thank you. My name's Kaylee Kavanaugh. I live in the 4th Ward. I want to talk about participatory budgeting. I moved to Evanston about a year ago, and I saw something about idea collection for participatory budgeting, but I was a little bit nervous to go. I had just moved here, and I wasn't sure if I knew what was best for the city. But I ended up attending, and it was an absolutely incredible experience. I felt like I was listened to, and I met new people with different perspectives. And I ended up spending the next year volunteering. I helped on some of the proposals, including the urban garden proposal, which ended up being funded, well, hopefully, through this, right? And it's, I think, the best experience I've had in Evanston since I moved here. I felt like I could really be a part of my community and influence the city I live in. It was an incredible chance to meet new people and to work with them. And I don't, I vote in elections, but I never felt like I had this type of influence. And I'm asking you to set aside $4 million in 2024 to continue participatory budgeting. I'd like to do this again, but I'd also like everyone else in Evanston to have this chance to either vote, or write a proposal, or come to an idea collection event. I want to raise my kid in a place where the residents have a say in how the money is spent. And so I hope you'll set that money aside for next year and add it to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to the online comments, which will be given by Mary Rosinski, followed by Mike Vasilko.
Hi, thank you. You know, I have concerns with the budget too, and how it's being presented right now, because like Mr. Kennedy said, the amount that they have for improvements in the capital improvements is only a sampling of what the five-year capital improvements budget is. And I don't know, I would like to know, who is directing staff to put these expenditures in there? Because, for example, with the civic center for this year, it has $1,005,000, but there's, isn't much detail in it, whereas last year, there was windows and furnace and stuff like that. But if you click on the online form and you look at it, it's in '22, I mean, '26, '27, '28, it's all for construction. And so by the end of the five-year capital improvements, we have $500 million in capital improvements with no detail in this online, and it's very disconcerting. Because I don't think that we should be the city that, you know, starts upon a project we don't intend to complete, and where the public has not had input into it. Is this what we want? Is this what we're going to do? I mean, I know one of the problems that I've heard on again, about the Robert Prom project that started out with us maybe funding $10 million, and then it became the city's funded close to $50 million, was according to city staff, we started the project before we were done with what we wanted to do. That's not how responsible cities plan their budgets. So I'm just thinking, I think that that capital improvements budget needs to be just kind of thrown out, started all over again, and have some real numbers of what we're talking about. And you could go down each column, like the parks and rec. I am so in favor of funding the parks and rec and having really good equipment and safe equipment, but we're spending more per park. And I think our estimates need to come in before we say we're going to do something. And I'd like us to do better comparative analysis between our neighboring committees, because the amount of debt that we have per resident here is going to far exceed any of our surrounding Skokie. And I don't even know Chicago. I don't consider us Chicago. They have billions of dollars. But I think we should be looking at Skokie, which has $68,000. We have $55,000. I think we should be looking at Womatt, thinking Northbrook East, communities that are similar with us, have similar projects, and seem to be able to pull their projects in at less cost. So I appreciate the time, and I know it's challenging in budget like this, but we need details, we need numbers, and we need to have a five-year plan that we are going to follow. We don't, we shouldn't be throwing out the five-year plan every year. This is nuts. Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Vasilko.
Thank you. Following the comments of others, I won't repeat some of them, but I, I don't see any attempt by staff or the city manager to control spending, no attempt to become more efficient. The mantra seems to be just spend more, and that's the rule. So I'm going to be jumping around, but on page 443 of the budget, there's a line item for redoing $2,000, $2,800,000 for Fountain Square improvements. What that means is Fountain Square redo, and the residents of Evanston should not have to pay twice for this kind of a project. So that should be stricken. You should get the money from those who created the problem. There's also a general Phase 1 engineering of $90,000 quoted to be said will be funded, will not be funded until 2023. Well, there is no budget for this in 2023, so I don't understand that. Somebody should explain it. Almost 900 Polheim employees is just ridiculous for a city our size, except for possibly some additional police and fire and the one health department staff head. I think all those other employee asks should be postponed or eliminated. We just don't need 900 people. Again, where is the $120 million of surpluses being applied to the budget? According to the records that go to the Finance and Budget Committee, there's a page where you can add up the totals, and it's somewhere between $110 and $140 million of surpluses as of September 1st of this year. So where's that money being allocated going forward? We don't need a property tax increase. What we need are the debt deeds like Northwestern and other supposed non-for-profits to pay their fair share. Where is the Northwestern funding you all promised in the last election campaign? There were promises by nearly everybody who was running, you were going to nail Northwestern for more money. That's not Brian Field, by the way. Also on page 448, there's a chart, and I think the previous speakers touched on this, that shows, I think they're additive, but there's 2023 Geo Bonds shown, which, no, we know don't exist.
15 seconds.
2024 Geo Bonds, 2025, 2026. They add up to well over $350 million. And our budget line for debt, it had to be voted on, was $152 million. So I don't know how, in such a short period of time, you're going to increase the budget or increase the debt by over $300 million.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That concludes the public comment portion of the budget hearing. Are there any members of council who would like to participate in the budget hearing? Councilmember Reed.
I just wanted to note, I believe there are a few more folks who wanted to participate in the budget hearing. And I'm not the mayor, and I'm not the chair, so I don't want to pretend that I have the power, but I just want to flag that. And then afterward, I do have some comments to make.
So the implications being made, there are people who arrived and didn't, chose not to sign up, but have since changed their mind and would like to speak. Is that, is that right? If you signed up online, it might be that we're just, we just sort of put you in the regular public comment bucket, but if you want to, if you want to come do your comment now, we can then remove you from that. Yeah, so go ahead, step forward if it's about, if it is meant to be part of the budget hearing.
And there are people online that put their hands up?
Sorry, what was that?
Please proceed.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Ray Janaja, and I'm a resident of the 4th Ward. I'm here to urge you to utilize at least 1% of the budget for participatory budgeting in the next year, and to continue funding participatory budgeting with at least 1% of the budget in the coming years. I moved to Evanston last year for graduate school at Northwestern. While I did not get to, while I did get to know some of my classmates here, I continued to feel as though the city didn't feel like home. It wasn't until I became involved with PB by going to the idea collection assemblies and becoming a budget delegate, that I found that I finally, that I finally found a community here. I've met some amazing people who inspire me to be involved in public service and strive for the betterment of all, and I look forward to being in touch with them for many years. I've also had the opportunity to feel like my voice mattered and to work on proposals that could have, that could have an impact on many, many people. I truly believe everyone, whether new or a long, or longtime residents of Evanston, should have this experience. I hope you can vote to make this happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We have a person that she's going to speak in Spanish, and I'm going to be her interpreter.
Okay, great, thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Julimar Albornoz. Soy habitante de la comunidad de Evanston, específicamente del bloque 2. Primero que nada quiero agradecer a todos, a todos, porque de una u otra manera pretenden apoyar y respaldar el bienestar social de la comunidad. Les contaré rápidamente cómo es que estoy aquí el día de hoy. Súper de participación de presupuesto por medio de las redes sociales, específicamente por un grupo llamado Coffee Evanston. Y mi compañera sería Carlino. Apoyé en la etapa final del presupuesto con mi voto a varias propuestas. Saber de participación de presupuesto y poder participar en el mismo me generó un sentimiento de libertad, ya que podemos expresar nuestras necesidades, ideas, opiniones, y sobre todo saber que somos escuchados y tomados en cuenta. Asimismo, quiero expresar la gran importancia que tiene para nuestra comunidad de Evanston la prolongación del presupuesto participativo para el próximo año. Todo esto con el fin, como lo dije al principio, de buscar y encontrar el bienestar social de la comunidad. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Julimar Albornoz Escalona. I live in the 2nd Ward in Evanston. I would like to thank you to all the councilmembers that support participatory budgeting and you trying to also taking care of the social wellness of the community. I want to say very quick what is the reason I'm here. I participated in the first part of, in the last phase of the participatory budgeting with my vote. I also support many of the proposals. I wanted to make sure if you guys can continue participatory budgeting, because for me, was when I participate, it creates a feeling of freedom. We can express our needs, ideas, opinions, and that was the most important, because we were here. Thank you so much, and I hope we continue PB, and thank you for supporting the well-being of our society.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm here in support of participatory budgeting, and I want to share my experience with this process. I've attended several idea collections at the beginning of PB and volunteered as a budget delegate to develop proposals. I'm proud to say that two of the proposals that I helped develop were selected for funding. As budget delegates, my daughters and I were able to address a need faced by marginalized youth and their families in Evanston. The grants and incentives for marginalized youth proposal that will be funded not only creates an opportunity for equity and action, but also empowers youth of Evanston by allowing them access to programming and resources offered in the city. Being able to review ideas that residents submitted at idea collections and online, then narrowing down to develop proposals for what residents requested was rewarding. This process fostered unity, teamwork amongst individuals with a common interest, which is making Evanston better. Allowing residents to directly influence how money is spent in Evanston allows all voices to be heard, not just the loudest ones in the room. Many volunteers dedicated time and effort to develop over 20 proposals representing the wants of Evanston residents. Seven were selected to be funded and will be implemented. I doubt that such initiatives could have been implemented by the normal business process within the city government in less than nine months. Finally, I would like to express how important it is for PB, for the PB process to continue, and ask that 1% of the budget is allocated to PB to allow residents to have an opportunity to provide input in how the money is allocated.
Thank you very, well, hold, hold on, so.
Hello, my name is Ray.
So let's just pause for a second. So who, who is in the room and is hoping to speak as a part of the public comment of the budget hearing at this time? So. What's that? So is that a total of four more commenters? Okay, three more. All right. Very good. So go ahead and just state your name for the record, and go ahead.
Hello, my name is Ray Katui. I live in the 5th Ward, and I'm a senior at ETHS. I'm a member of the Youth, Young, Adult Division Committee, and also a member of the Evanston North Shore. and also a member of the Evanston North Shore NAACP Youth Council, which was one of the seven winners on February with 2,692 votes. As a high school student, I didn't really think my vote would matter, but it did. And I would like for other students to be able to engage in politics. Thank you.
My name is Alec Lloyd. I'm 17 years old and a junior at ETHS. I'm also a resident of the sixth ward and a member of the Youth and Young Adult Division Committee. I had the opportunity to work on the committee with my friends for participatory budgeting and feel that it was one of the best ways to learn how real government works firsthand. From an idea to the creation of an actual proposal and soon implementation, it all started with a bunch of students coming together and brainstorming.
My name is Darius DeBose. I live in the fifth ward. I am 17 years old, and I'm a senior at ETHS. I'm a member of the Youth, Young, Adult Division Committee and a member of the Evanston North Shore NAACP Youth Council. I would like the participatory budgeting to continue because, hold on, because there were some very good proposals that did not make it in this time that might make it in the next time, and I learned a lot of great skills and met a lot of awesome people.
Good evening, council. I am Kimberly Holmes Ross with Evanston Cradle to Career, where we were happy to partner with participatory budgeting. We were one of the first to partner and have an idea collection assembly with many of our 40 partners to educate partners on what it was and how to get it done. And our advocates, Parla Accion, were a big part of it, and they will come to you tonight, and we do hope this will continue.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rocío Mansera. Yo vivo en la zona número ocho, y quiero darles las gracias por haber tenido la oportunidad de hacer un entrenamiento y colección de ideas en la Robert Crown. También fui delegada como presupuesto en la ciudad, y al igual que yo, muchos padres tuvieron la oportunidad de participar y tuvimos la gran experiencia también. Darles las gracias a la ciudad de Evanston por confiar en la organización de COFI y a los padres voluntarios. Al igual que su tiempo tan valioso para registrar 6,565, pedimos que nos apoyen este año con el 1% del presupuesto que es el venidero 2024, para que siga la democracia, la voz y la comunidad de Evanston. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Rocío Mansera. I live in the eighth ward. Thank you for the opportunity, because I was able to go to Robert Crown, to the idea collection. Then I become a budget delegate. Many parents have the opportunity to participate and engage with this process. 6,500 people are registered, and I'm right here to ask you for 1% from the budget, because we want to continue the democracy and our voice to be heard. Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you very much. So now this does conclude the public comment portion of the, oh, sorry, one more. Tricia Connolly.
I've been waiting. Thank you. I am speaking tonight in regard to the budget as well. While surrounding municipalities are priding themselves on not raising property taxes, including several that many of our senior management live in those communities, by the way, we here in Evanston are willing to propose raising taxes and blowing out next year's budget to see what sticks. I'm extremely disappointed that continuing under this leadership, there has not been a shift in culture that starts with no or very minimal financial requests first and then brings this to the community. This plays out like, well, you know what, let's aim high and see what we can get. And I, for one, am not appreciative of that. And I'm sure our folks that are really on the edge of having to leave Evanston are not either. So while we're talking about raising property taxes, hiking our water sewer rates, raising the library levy, and having discussions that our parks are underfunded, on the other side, tucked away in five TIF funds, is money that has been scraped away over time for some of the increases I'm speaking of. And this is a problem because, you know, we can't just fund the things that normally would be funded otherwise, and then later say, well, you know what, there's a special project we'd like to do. Let's really have a deep conversation about how to make it happen and putting money aside. No, it gets to be, guess what, you know, the library needs money, and we got to like push to get the money from you folks. And, you know, this is a problem to me as well, because there is no free money. One way or the other, the taxpayer is going to pay. Sadly, the siphoning of money into a TIF creates a scenario that we're faced with. You know, gee, do we want our library funded? Okay, well, we got to raise taxes for that when money is sitting over on the side in some special fund. Once again, many of us will make our statements here tonight, attend our ward meetings and speak there. I wish we had a more collaborative manner in which this process could occur, and we can take a deep look at some of the things we claim to be committed to in Evanston, like housing affordability, like, you know, making sure that we have things concerning, you know, job training and many other things that we said are so important. We need to plan for these things, and we need to do it now. It's time to bring Northwestern to the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, this concludes the public comment portion of the public hearing for the budget. We now go to members of council, beginning with councilmember Reed, followed by Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Biss. First, I just want to say thank you to all of the public commentators for coming out and sharing their thoughts on the budget. I have a special place in my heart for the PB public commentators. And I want us to note the diversity of folks who came out and gave public comment for PB, both in age, race, where they live throughout the city, and just highlight that this is something special. And it's, you know, folks said, you know, it's crazy that the council spent $500,000 to administer $3 million. That this was an outrageous expenditure. No, the expenditure was to ensure that we had the resources we needed to reach these members of our community who traditionally are not touched by city government. And so I'm really proud of that, and I hope we can continue this going forward. And on the last note there, PB does not, other than the money to administer the program, does not necessarily have to cost us new money. We can take money that is existing and allocated to certain things and just change the way, the process in which the money is allocated. So I want to highlight that as well. But I do want to move on to other topics. I tend to come to this council with new ideas for revenue. Today, I just have two, a few things that are the opposite of that, which are expenditures. And I just want to put this on our radar if it is not already. One of those being under our climate action resiliency goals. It seems as though the environmental equity study is not within our budget and funded. Is that, am I correct on that from staff? Is Cara Pratt here? Or someone who can answer that? I think Laura, maybe?
Hello, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. So when we did go through the first blush with the capital improvement program, the environmental justice study was not put in. This is something that I'm in discussion with Cara Pratt about, because right now we're in a phase where staff is kind of going through and surgically making some recommendations of critical projects.
I would encourage this council to include the environmental equity study in our 2024 budget. Another project that, or another CARP goal that was not included was, I believe, $150,000 for bike rebates. Can anybody speak to that, and to be sure that I'm correct? Yeah, so.
My understanding was that was not a CIP project, but was a participatory budgeting project.
I don't think, it may have, also, councilmember Hittikas might have some information.
Yeah, when I spoke with Cara Pratt about that, it was an option in participatory budgeting. The sustainability staff felt pretty strongly about it being a good project, and so it was in their initial budget, but was one of their last cuts.
I would encourage us to seek funding to get that $150,000 for a bike rebate, and we can talk about the specifics of the program. So those are two things that I'd love to see us spend some money on, including PB next year. I do want to talk about a few things that were raised during public comment. Property taxes. So it was mentioned during public comment that, we know that property taxes are a regressive source of revenue, and I feel as though at the last HCDC, a number of housing providers tried to laugh me out of the room when I said that, and surprisingly so, that multi-unit rental properties are taxed at a higher rate than residential, than a single-family home. Can someone confirm that for me? Right? Am I somehow misguided?
No, you're not misguided.
Yeah, and I know I'm not. And so with that, we do know that the property tax burden will fall disproportionately on folks who are living in rental units. Although, to me, that is so backwards, because that's a much more productive use of the land than a single-family home. But without that policy consideration in mind, I've asked staff a number of times to get an estimate for what, we have the estimate that for the 7% city increase, that that would be about $155 for a $400,000 single-family home. Did we ever get an estimate for what that would be for a commercial property, for a rental property?
Good evening, mayor. The members of the city council, yeah, we don't have that number, since that varies. And I think the one clarification I, I don't know, I think the flats or the rental units up to six, they are valued at the 10%, which is the same as the single family.
Say it one more time. Oh, if a two flat, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To six units of the flat, yeah.
Okay. So we don't have that estimate yet. I am interested in that, because there is going to be a slightly higher burden on folks who are living in rental units. And that's something we should be considerate of and look for alternative sources of revenue wherever possible, outside of property taxes. And then there are a number of concerns about the growing headcount in the city. And I think there is, I hate that I read it all the time, but Evanston Now article that shows the headcount increase over years. So I believe what I read was in 2019, there was a headcount of roughly 100 fewer employees. Can someone speak to that? Is that one accurate? That we've grown the headcount by, from about 795 to now 8 roughly 90?
Clayton Black, budget manager, can you clarify which years you're referring to? We can definitely check.
Let's look at 2019 headcount versus today.
What we're proposing today?
Yep.
Is it okay if we look that up and?
Come back. Yep, that's fine. And what I'm going here for is I'm curious about, is my time up? This is budget. This is $450 million budget.
Your time is up. If council would like to direct me to ignore the time limitations, that's their privilege.
I will, I will hold for now, but if, I think, again, with our budget, we should have more than five minutes to speak, but I will hold for now.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, I also agree. And I'm not sure, you know, the 90 seconds, how we're deciding on that when we're for a budget hearing, the time restrictions. Also, I wonder, and again, I also want to thank everybody who came out. It's so important, your participation. The budget really is the essential document that reflects the blueprint of our city, of our priorities. So this is where it's at. So thank you all for coming out and participating. And I wonder if, Mayor Biss, if you could maybe just go over the budget process for the public, like what's, what's next? I mean, when, I think it's important for everybody to know how that, how we proceed.
I don't have all the dates in my head, and maybe Mr. Desai can help. There's, the budget consists mostly of ordinances, all those would require two votes at council. Also, the screen says things that are true, as opposed to me saying things that are trish. So.
Good evening again. So here's the budget calendar, and again, this is the budget hearing. City council is not taking any action. We have a lot of ward meetings, the town halls, and so Friday, October 6th, when we presented, October 10th, we had a budget discussion finance budget. October 16th, budget at the city council. Today is the budget hearing. On 26th, the Thursday, we have a budget town hall Spanish at the civic center. October, November, we have award meetings. We have a Thursday, we have award meetings. We have a one-ward meeting tomorrow. In November, we have a couple of, and then on November 2nd, the Thursday, we have a budget town hall at the Levy Center. November 6th, truth and taxation hearing, which is talk about this taxes, property tax. So again, there'll be hearing, and you would have a chance to talk about the taxes. And then November 13th would be a city council meeting, which is a regular city council. 20th.
And just to be clear, that's the one, the one date that's omitted from this slide?
Right, yes.
But it is an important date.
But yes, the budget can be discussed, but it is at the discretion of the council, whether they will, yes.
So is that an action date, November, like?
Yeah, so what's anticipated in terms of council votes would be November 13th and 27th.
Correct.
With, you know, typically how we've done these things, we'd have introduction of ordinances on the 13th, and then action on ordinances as well as action on resolutions on the 27th.
Let's add there. So we'll add the mayor, yeah, you're right. We'll add the November 13th as the introduction of all the ordinance. And the November 27th would be the anticipated budget adoption.
Thank you so much. And will the November 6th date be only a truth and taxation hearing, or is it also going to be another council meeting? It just seems like it would be good to have a designated evening.
At this time, the expectation is that would be exclusively a truth and taxation hearing. There may or may not be committees scheduled on that evening. But there would not, at this time, be the expectation of a city, a special city council meeting that night. And there is, there is not a regular city council meeting that night.
Okay, so that'll be a special evening just for that. Great. Thank you very much. So I'll just make a few comments. I can't support this budget. I think, you know, we're looking at a budget increase from page, if we look at page 17 of the budget, with the actual number of expenses last year in '22 at 273 million, and a proposed budget of 450 million in '24, that's a 64% increase. And it's just so important that we refer to the actual number, and that's what we have for '22. We don't have an actual number for '23. Every year, it's changed drastically, you know, before the audit. So we really can't rely on what we budgeted for '23 for comparison. So what we can say is that last year, our expenses were 273, and we're, you know, what our management is proposing is a increase, a 64% increase of up to 450 million. I can't support that. I can't support the increases in water at this point. I feel like what we are seeing is a, you know, sort of an ask-for-everything budget, and that's not the approach we need. We need, we need an approach that shows an understanding that people are being driven out of Evanston, that working people, that middle-class people, that small businesses are being forced out, that our demographics are changing. We need that to be the approach. We need to feel that, you know, that effort and understanding throughout our budget. And I just don't see that, so I can't support any aspect of these increases right now until I can really see that reflected and understanding of what our community needs and what's been happening as a result of the high cost of living in this city. And then, you know, one or two of the speakers mentioned, we have debt. We have not only our GO bond debt, we have our Geo Bonds, we also have our public safety pension debt. And I'm very proud to be part of a council that historically now is, is fully funding our public safety pensions to bring that debt down. But nevertheless, it's, you know, quarter billion dollars. You add that to our GO bonds, we have enormous debt in the city. We can't afford to keep increasing it, and when I look at that, you know, five-year projection with hundreds of millions of additional GO bond debt, when our debt ceiling is 150, I mean, that's not going to stick. So I don't want to see numbers coming at us that we know, you know, just. So I don't want to see numbers coming at us that we know, you know, just won't fly. So I just hope we can, that, that our management can come back with a budget. And I started going through the budget. I started spending hours and hours, like I've done, everybody knows, these past two years, to keep our levy flat. And again, I'm proud of this council for having done that. You know, looking at, like, for example, like the vacancy rate. We can go to 4% next year and save a few more million dollars rather than 2%. But I realized it's just too enormous right now of a task. I mean, it's just way over the top. So I really hope that we can see, when we come back to discuss budget, that we can see a revised budget that reflects our city and our city needs, a budget that understands that our property taxes are driving people out, and that really, I'd also like to see more of a commitment to, you know, regular line items that, about maintenance and repair of our infrastructure, and not, not seeing that put off in place of other new projects. So I think that's, I think that's about all I have to say for the moment. Thank you.
Hearing, thank you. Hearing nothing further, I hereby adjourn this hearing. Which brings us to the mayor's public announcements and proclamations, of which there are none. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
So I'm happy to announce that our Public Works Department is a recipient of this special award in the name of Central Street Bridge Replacement Project, and it is in conjunction with the American Society of Civil Engineers. We have Director Edgar Kano, who can speak about this award and its significance.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Biss, members of the council, Clerk Mendoza, and Acting City Manager Ogbo. My name is Edgar Kano, I'm the Public Works Agency Director. I am delighted to once again be here and present another, another award for the Central Street Bridge Project. The last time I was here, I spoke highly of Sat Nagar, our senior project manager, and the way he handled the project. I think this time, I'll let him actually speak to the award and give us, give us some information on it, so.
I just wanted to say a few words that Central Street Bridge, which was built in 1907, is at a very, was at a challenging location because of the central street which carries majority of our emergency vehicles and trucks, in addition to the cars and the buses and the pedestrians. She is located close to the Evanston Hospital, our fire station number three, the Canal Shores Golf Course, you name it. So this award is given to us for maintaining the two-way traffic during the construction of the bridge. It's not easy to just replace a 100-year-old bridge without closing the road, so we were able to achieve the, you know, replacing the whole bridge, all the way from bottom up. Some of the caissons went all, almost like 100 feet, 95 feet deep, to rebuild the bridge. So we were able to have the temporary support, maintain two lanes of traffic for the entire length. The construction started in '21, we were able to finish half of the bridge, the remaining half in '22. So, see, so we, the all-access maintained at all times to the, pretty much to the Canal Shores Golf Course, as well as the fire station, and also the hospitals, so. With minimum inconvenience, and also we had a lot of support from all the, not only the fire department, as well as the Canal Shores, and also the huge condos, both at the northwest corners. This is very landlocked, and I want to especially thank Councilmember Revel for coordinating and working with us throughout the project with a lot of concerns and complaints, so, and also thank the whole council for giving us the opportunity for this project, and I hope we will be able to do the same thing for the next bridge that is coming up soon. Thank you all.
And, you know, it's nice, right? We, all of us up here know you well, Sat, and know the quality of your work, but I appreciate you presenting, so the community can get a chance as well to know about the great work you do for the community. And I'm not going to let you leave for a second, because we have a few people who want to speak as well. Councilmember Reed, followed by Revel.
Councilmember Revel.
Okay. Well, I'm really glad that Sat was able to tell us about some of the design challenges of this bridge. I mean, keeping it open for the whole construction was, was an amazing design challenge, and it had to, had to stay open, because we have the fire station and the hospital right there. It was, anyway, wonderful partnership, and I'm looking forward now to another challenging partnership with the Lincoln Street Bridge.
Just as note, I flipped my light on as we were moving on from the budget. I still had questions and wanted some of my questions answered.
About the budget?
About the budget.
I mean, that, are these questions that you can have answered offline or at one of the subsequent hearings? I mean, we've, we've ended that portion of the agenda.
We've ended that portion of the agenda. I will say that, again, we, we need more time to discuss the budget.
I mean, I don't know if you were in the room at the time, but there was actually a slideshow of all the different opportunities, one of which is already in the past, one of which is today, several more coming up. I think there's no shortage of opportunities to talk about the budget. If there's a reason why your question has to be asked tonight, as opposed to at a future meeting or in writing, let me know. But, you know, that, the hearing has been closed, so.
The hearing is closed, that's fine. I, I just will say that this council doesn't need a lecture, but it's a $430, $50 million budget. Yeah, we took like 10 minutes to give some monologues here, some dueling monologues, but we didn't really get into a discussion. And then we're going to be voting on this budget in November. I think we need to really allot some time to have more substantive discussions than what we've allotted thus far. And so I'm happy to hold the rest of the questions now, for now. But I, I do think it's also, there's value in having these discussions in public and not just in writing in the background, because we want to make sure our constituents understand our thinking and the way we approach it, and allow them an opportunity to interrogate whether our thinking is right, and offer suggestions, and be involved in that process. So I will hold for now.
I agree with that, and I would just say that it's probably, I certainly wouldn't suggest that the purpose of written communication with staff is to hide it from the public. I think.
That's not.
Written communication with staff that's made public is probably the best way to illuminate how these discussions might evolve. All right. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements. Sorry, we already did that. Is the communications from the city clerk.
Yes, I sent an email from Stephanie Solinsky in support of the Ryan Field, also one from Jenny Flynn from the Illinois Academy of Physicians, supporting the Orden Stapan flavored tobaccos. And Sally Crane also asking Councilmember Reed to supporting doing something with the 300 block of Dewey.
Question.
Thank you. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is what you might call regular public comments. This public comment is a little bit of an administrative challenge, and I'm explaining this not for sympathy, but just to ask for your assistance in navigating. Because we have a number of council meetings, week after week after week, there's kind of a bit of a jumble of people who are signing up for different council meetings, and so I've done my best to kind of figure out who signed up already for a subsequent council meeting and pull them aside, but if I miss you, just make yourself known, as I have no doubt folks will, because, again, there's, there's a lot happening on the screen in front of me that I, that might lead to some errors. But we'll begin, as always, with those who sign up on this sheet. Oh, sorry, the last thing to say is everyone will be given two minutes in this evening's public comment. So we'll begin with Len Lampkin, who will be followed by Don Ziegler, and then Lauren Peters.
You sign up first? You go first?
It looks me up, but I heard my name, but I didn't.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, yes, you're first, Mr. Lampkin.
So not knowing which form to sign, I signed both, because that's what I always do. But this is the general city council, so I'll talk about the budget relation to another item that's going to be coming before you in the future, which is Northwestern. So I hear the deficit. I hear we don't have enough money. There's plenty of money. If we, the people of Evanston, and you, the city council, encourage and force Northwestern to sign this community benefits agreement that's enforceable, enough with them, oh, I'll pay $100,000 for this, I'll give you an ambulance, I'll give you a fire station, I'll put a new floor in, I'll put a recording studio in. If Harvard can do it for Cambridge, if Yale can do it for New Haven, and we talked about affordable housing, I heard Aldo McKelly, 25% of the $54 million a year that Yale is giving New Haven is going to affordable housing, so that their staff of Yale can live in New Haven, because they're being priced out. We could do the same thing here, and we could take a sizable chunk, whatever you guys think is reasonable, but 2 million, 4 million, 5 million is not enough money from Northwestern. When they have a surplus, when they have $120 million in, just from the Big Ten contract, and they operated at a budget surplus the last two years, plus their endowment, they have plenty of money, they just have to decide whether they want to be good partners with the city of Evanston, or they want to continue to abuse and use us. And I think it's time for them to be good partners with the city of Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Don Ziegler, who will be followed by Lauren Peters, and then Bruce Dublin.
Honorable Mayor Biss, members of the city council, I'm Don Ziegler of the Fourth Ward, Chair of the Evanston Health Advisory Council, on the faculty of UIC School of Public Health, and a volunteer of the American Heart Association. I speak in support of the original proposal to ban the sale of all flavored tobacco products. Unfortunately, the Human Services Committee voted to water down the proposal. Oh, we can't go that far, can't tell people what to do. People will just go elsewhere to buy tobacco, or the state should do it. Why should Evanston do this when no other community in Illinois has? Here is why. We know that Americans are dying at an alarming rate relative to other developed countries. One factor is how we deal with tobacco, our number-one preventable health problem. A major contributor is the availability and promotion of flavored tobacco products, which I liken to a pedophile enticing kids into the van with candy. But the recent Lung Association National Tobacco Control Report Card gave Illinois an F for addressing flavored tobacco products. However, and I am not exaggerating or being overly dramatic, I truly believe that Evanston has the potential to directly impact the health, not only of Evanston, but of our entire state. Someone has to take the lead on this issue. Evanston has a history of leadership on reparations in tobacco. As happened with Tobacco 21, we did it first, then 35 other communities did, and finally the state did. If we don't take the lead, who will? Other communities are watching. So please follow the recommendations of our highly competent Health Department, the Evanston Health Advisory Council, all major health organizations, the Afro-American Tobacco Control Council, and the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and pass a total ban on flavored tobacco products. Leadership matters. If you want a healthier Illinois, a healthier Evanston, pass this measure and watch what other communities, how they follow. Stand up and be Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lauren Peters, who will be followed by Bruce Dublin.
Hello, and thank you, and hello to my daughter, who's still awake and watching. My name is Lauren Peters, and I'm here today to talk to you about the hopefully comprehensive tobacco flavor ban that we can eventually pass here in Evanston. Echoing what Don said, I am also here as a parent of a District 65 kid, on top of being the Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association. Don obviously stated a lot of facts, but there's just a couple that I really want to point out to you. Sale of cigars has more than doubled since, in 2000 to 2020, from 6.2 billion cigars to 13.3 billion cigars. We see the youth gravitating to the other options as soon as e-cigarettes are banned. Let's do the right thing, do a comprehensive ban, and we will see the following communities that follow us. We'll see it happen eventually statewide. So I will take up no more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next speaker is Bruce Dublin.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Dublin. I'm a general internist with over 35 years of experience in primary care, community-based services, much of it here in Evanston. Also joining the growing crowd to support this ban on flavored tobacco and menthol-infused products, HS1. We regulate air and water quality, we ensure the safety of our food, we limit the sale of consumption of alcohol, we mandate the use of seat belts, and the reality is that we sometimes have to protect ourselves from our own poor decision-making. We act when there is a way to reduce risk to the public health that we deem critical, and that is what we are here to talk about today. You've heard about the high incidence of smoking and its relations to lung cancer, the number-one killer in men and women here in the United States, 80% of which is caused directly by smoking. And smoking is, it is known that flavored tobaccos are the way that most young adults start smoking. People who start smoking at young ages find it more addictive physically, and find it much harder to quit at the end. And if you look at minority communities, 80%, 85% of those in black and brown communities, probably true here in Evanston, use menthol tobacco products. So there's a health equity issue here, in addition to a health issue. I hope today we can work together to support and protect the citizens of Evanston from the dangers of flavored tobacco. And this is a move that's in line with a long tradition of service here in Evanston. Our Department of Health has always led the way, and I hope that we can do the same thing today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Deborah Geismar, followed by Emma Daisy, and then Denise Young.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a family physician who's been in clinical practice for 37 years, as well as an Evanston resident in the Ninth Ward. I appreciate the ability, the opportunity to speak on this. I have not anything more to add, because those who just came before me have certainly pointed out that we need not to just have the watered-down ordinance, but the original one that prohibits all tobacco-flavored products, whether or not they be cigars, which apparently are a great contributor to what's being sold now on the market, especially to young people. So I will save you time and just let you know that I am in favor of the original comprehensive ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Emma Daisy, who will be followed by Denise Young, and then Bonnie Wilson.
My name is Emma Daisy, and I'm president of the Illinois Academy of, president-elect of the Illinois Academy of Family Physicians. I've got a few more days to go on that one. And I'm also a resident of Evanston and a parent of a D65 student myself. And I'm speaking in support of the full comprehensive ban, which I really hope you guys will pass. I have the same things to say. Nearly a decade ago, you guys were leaders in the, making our city the first in Illinois to increase tobacco sales from age 18 to 21 through the passage of Tobacco 21. You have the chance again to be leaders and be on the right side of history on this one. Flavored cigarettes, including menthol cigarettes, fruit-flavored cigars, and e-cigarettes that come in thousands of candy-colored flavor, are what we're trying to ban right now. The tobacco industry knows that most users start in their teens. They want to hook people young. In fact, a Centers for Disease Control study found that more than 80% of high school students and nearly 75% of middle school students who reported using a tobacco, tobacco product in the last 30 days used a flavored one. in the last 30 days used a flavored one. I have lots of patients who say that they want to quit. I have lots of patients who say that they can't quit, that they'll never quit, that they'll quit when they die. But I never have anyone say, I'm glad I started. That's what we're talking about. By exempting flavored cigars, the Human Services Committee ordinance leaves a considerable opening for the industry to adapt and perpetuate their addictive product, largely aimed at catching new users. A new report issued by the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids and the Rutgers Institute for Nicotine and Tobacco Studies documents how tobacco companies have flooded the market with cheap flavored cigars that appeal to kids as part of their marketing strategies to attract young people or lifelong customers. Sales of all cigars more than doubled between 2000 and 2021. You've heard that. These flavored cigars are colorfully packaged, widely available, and cheap, and they've helped make cigars the second most popular product among youth. By passing the comprehensive and nicotine flavors ordinance that removes all flavored tobacco products, Evanston would take a bold step forward, and I thank you for allowing me the chance to speak today.
Thank you very much. I did make an error in reading the sequence. I read somebody from the Zoom list by mistake, so we'll continue with you in person and then go to Zoom. The next speaker is Bonnie Wilson, who will be followed by Karen Davis.
Thank you. I'm Bonnie Wilson. I live in the 1st Ward, and I'm speaking on the development of 504-514 South Boulevard. I've been a real estate agent in Evanston for the past 39 years, and one of the most difficult parts of my job as a real estate agent is finding affordable rental housing in Evanston for my client tenants who can't afford, cannot afford to buy a home in Evanston, but want to live in Evanston. I've given this information to the council members, but I wanted to say this in person. I looked at the apartments for rent in the multiple listing service, and I found the rental listings are between south of Main Street and east of Chicago Avenue. I want to tell you the difference in rents to what the apartments on the market now compare to what the new development will be asking for rent. I have compared 1, 2, and 3-bedroom apartments. 1-bedroom apartments for, or right now, listing for $1,0859. The new development, 1-bedroom apartments, the affordable rents will be $556. The 2-bedroom apartments renting now are $2,149. The new development for a 2-bedroom will be $1,0336. The 3-bedrooms renting now are $2,031. The 3-bedrooms for the new development will be $1,054. I know many of you are already supporting this development, and I encourage those of you that are now on the fence to please support this development. It will make my life a lot easier. My client tenants will be very happy that they can now afford to live in Evanston and work in Evanston. Is the time is up? I just want to say one more thing, two more things, that the entrance to, as you know, South Boulevard is the entrance when you're driving into Evanston, and wouldn't it be nice to see this very attractive building instead of a parking lot full of cars and trucks? This is very much needed in Evanston. It's close to transportation and the lake. Thank you for supporting 504-514 South Boulevard.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Karen Davis.
I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak again in support of ordinance 108022 banning semi-trucks on neighborhood streets around Cleason's Greenhouse in the 8th Ward. I'll repeat a little bit what I said my last speaking. My family and I have lived at 333 Dewey for the last 30 years, as I said in my last time, that for the first 20 years, semis at Cleason's were not an issue. They used their small, neighborhood-friendly trucks, and it was not an issue in the neighborhood. The business has grown the last 10 years. They brought semis into our residential neighborhood, making many days unbearable with the noise and air pollution blocking the streets and making it hazardous for walkers, bikers, and cars. They have three other locations in other areas that are industrial and more rural where they have major access roads, not neighborhood streets. About eight to nine years ago, we worked with Ann Rainey, and we did get signs for no idling and no overnight parking, but that really has helped minimally. These semis should not be allowed on our neighborhood street. We have, very few neighbors have driveways, cars are parked on both sides. We just, semis should not be allowed on these neighborhood streets. Two other neighbors have asked me to read letters that they sent and weren't able to attend. The first is Catherine and Richard Smith at 341 Dewey. Dear Mr. Reed, I wanted to put forward my support for the proposed ordinance to prohibit semis on our street and other residential areas around Cleason's Greenhouse. I've lived on Dewey Avenue for seven years. Initially, Cleason seemed like it would be a charming enterprise to have as a neighbor, flowers greenery and the like. After seven years of noisy trucks and unhealthy engine idling often waking us up early in the morning, the springs and summers have taken on a very negative character. Two things that are particularly concerning to us that we've noticed while we're sitting on our front porch. Some trucks barrel down the street as if Dewey were a Main Street like Dodger Asbury. Some days, particularly around Memorial Day, there is continuous stream of trucks entering and exiting our block. I hope this ordinance will be passed and be implemented in a way that benefits all. The next is Arden and Lloyd Davidson from 424 Dewey. I and my husband support bans of semis from driving through our neighborhood while going to Cleason's. The trucks are too large and are a danger to children, damage trees, and pollute the air, especially when idling. When the ordinance that applies to the situation was originally written, Cleason's had smaller trucks and fewer greenhouses. As the company has grown larger, the semi-trucks have introduced and caused unnecessary problems to our residential neighborhood. Thank you, Arden Davidson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This, I believe, concludes the in-person portion of public comments. Do I have that right? Great. In that case, we will move on to the online commenters. We'll begin with Mike Vasilko, who will be followed by David Lipschitz, and then David Spross.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the background noise. Didn't get a finished, chance to finish what I was saying earlier. On page 17 of the packet, there is a chart that shows the increase from the 2022 actual budget to the 2023 and then 2024. 2023 is kind of irrelevant because what's going to happen is next year, the staff's going to come back to you and say, oh, we found all this extra money we didn't spend. So I think you should be comparing the two, 2022 and 2024, which states an increase of $176 million, $176 million in two years. That's why it's so outrageous that we're being proposed a $450 million budget, among other things. The other thing I just wanted to add, again, I guess I'd just like to know, is the fact that we're a home rule community, city, that we can go so far into debt with geo bonds. If we were not a home rule committee, or not city, would we have to restrict ourselves and ask for referendums in order to increase the debt limit beyond what it is now to $152 million? So it's now $102 million, and earlier I stated, looking at my head, it's going north of $350 million in a few years. That's ridiculous. I agree with previous speakers who said we should eliminate some of the CIP projects and get realistic about what Evanston can afford. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Lipschitz, who will be followed by David Spross, and then Josh Sharp.
Good evening. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Evanston Restaurant and Hospitality Group, representing over 300 small businesses here in Evanston, 50 of whom signed a letter that was addressed to the council, which I hope by now you've all had a chance to read. And they'd have flooded the chamber themselves if they weren't busy running their businesses and restaurants. Speaking to you tonight to request that you take the proposed ordinance for the new minimum wage and take it off the consent agenda, so that you can have a meaningful conversation about three amendments that we are asking the council to consider. As we stated in the letter, the first is the proposal that the minimum wage be tied to an automatic annual increase. The second is that the proposal have a two-tiered system for larger and smaller employers, and the third is the inclusion of employees who are 17 and under. Those are the three things that we would like to see amended in the proposal as it is now. On the CPI, the current proposal, which I want to be very clear, we support the 1550 minimum wage. We're not suggesting that we don't. We do. But we would like to see these amendments to the ordinance. The proposed increase will represent next year nearly a 14% increase, and therefore, we feel that it would be more prudent going forward if the City Council periodically assessed any adjustments in the minimum wage rather than locking in a fixed CPI or even a cap on an increase.
15 seconds.
This approach, as we said in the letter, allows for a more tailored response to the unique circumstances that we have here in Evanston and in the economy. As we have all learned through the COVID years, anything and everything can happen, and we have concerns about being locked into a CPI going forward when the council is certainly able to
Thank you very much.
address that as time goes by. The increase, the 1550% increase, will put Evanston above both the county and the state of Illinois through 2025 and possibly beyond.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Spross, who will be followed by Josh Sharp, and then Howard Gartman. And I just want to say that I know it's sometimes hard for people who are participating remotely to hear the timing, and so I'm trying to strike a balance between not sort of barking at you, but also being audible, and I'll try to, I'll try to do my best in that respect. But again, David Spross, who will be followed by Josh Sharp, and then Howard Gartman.
Okay, well, thank you very much. As mentioned, my name is David Spross, and I'm the Executive Director of the National Association of Tobacco Outlets, excuse me, which is a national retail trade association that represents more than 66,000 retail stores throughout the country, including several in Evanston. I wanted to explain how a menthol tobacco product and a flavored e-cigarette ban will hurt our responsible retail members and have unintended consequences. First, I think it's important to understand how our licensed retailers sell tobacco products. Licensed retailers make sure only adults of legal age can buy tobacco products that are in full compliance with all laws, which include age verifying to prevent sales to anyone under 21, sell only FDA-regulated products, and that comply with all federal and state marketing restrictions, and of course, pay taxes as well. It is no secret that if this ban is passed, these responsible and licensed retailers will experience a negative economic impact. Banning menthol tobacco products and flavored e-cigarettes put a significant amount of retail sales at risk. Customers who buy these products in retail stores often rely on these stores to also buy gas, groceries, snacks, and beverages. So the loss to retail business is not just the loss of sale of tobacco products, but also these ancillary products that help the economy and keep the stores open. So this inevitably leads to the question of where will these consumers go, as surely there'll be other sources to buy tobacco products. Well, for one, the sales will shift to the illicit and legal market, where products are sold on the street where no laws are followed.
15 seconds.
An example of this is what happened in Massachusetts in 2020, where the state tobacco task force issued a report where they mentioned all the increase in illicit sales. And then finally, people will go across the border, they'll leave Evanston. There are approximately 900 retail locations just 10 miles outside of the Evanston city limits. So certainly, we'll see if this ban is passed, is those consumers leaving the city of Evanston to purchase tobacco products.
Thank you very much.
Ancillary products.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Josh Sharp, who will be followed by Howard Gartman, and then Rebecca Young.
Thank you, Mayor Biss, and council members for the time to testify this evening. By way of background, my name is Josh Sharp, and I'm the CEO of the Illinois Fuel and Retail Association. We're an association of more than 300 members with more than 4,000 retail locations across Illinois, and I'm here to represent retailers this evening, not tobacco companies. With respect to the ordinance being contemplated by Evanston, we're opposed to it mainly for three reasons. Number one, Illinois and especially Cook County already have a thriving and unfortunately violent illicit market for illegal cigarettes. This ban will only add to that problem and force retailers to suffer. Two, this proposed ban will unfairly target retailers when we're not the problem. And finally, three, total bans on these type of products don't actually work. As we know from years and years of misguided public policy on drugs like cannabis, supply always finds a way to meet demand. Let me circle back to what I just said about the thriving illicit tobacco market going on in Cook County. Here's three, here's three things about that you need to know. One, it's incredibly profitable. Cigarette smugglers and illegal sellers can make almost $3 per pack, bringing in product from a state like Missouri where the tax is only 17 cents. Number two, it's violent. Gang battles and turf wars have led to multiple deaths in the county over the past several years, not to mention all of the other associated crimes, and that's not to mention involuntary victims as well. And three, as the previous speaker just said, the illicit market doesn't check IDs, it doesn't care about age restrictions, and there's no effort to restrict use. I didn't have this in my prepared testimony. I'm going to go off script for just a moment, but I think it's fitting this evening that you all have talked about your budget, because this proposed ban doesn't come without a price. I heard several, several speakers earlier talk about a bike rebate program for $150,000. Another speaker talked about buying smoke detectors, fire extinguishers.
15 seconds.
Carbon monoxide detectors. One second, Mayor. The proposed budget hit for banning these products is between $84,000 and $100,000. All of that money could be better spent on items like that going to the budget, and not a ban where users will go to other municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Howard Gartman, who will be followed by Rebecca Young, and then Denise Young. Is Howard Gartman in the Zoom? Seeing not, the next speaker then is, I messed up the order again, I apologize. The next speaker is Rebecca Young, who will be followed by Evie Russell, and then Denise Young.
Hello. I am speaking, my name is Rebecca Luzadder Young. I am speaking on behalf of amending city code section 101113 on the ban of semi-trucks on Dewey. So things that we've already talked about is that the semis block driveways, they've been hitting cars, they're blocking school buses, and then blocking traffic when loading in the street. We've submitted several photos to just show how narrow our streets are and how traffic does not get by. What we're not talking about is that not all of the change is within Cleason's control. Cleason, yes, does have control over the rules and regulations of their own company, but Cleason's does not have control over the rules and regulations of other companies or their third-party vendors and suppliers. So the challenge we're having is that Cleason's has been unable to control the behaviors of its vendors and suppliers. This is why we continue to have issues with semis. These drivers are not from our neighborhood. They do not know how to navigate our tight streets. They have not been driving down Dewey for the last decade. When they create issues, there's no repercussions back on them or their companies. The only accountable person, the only company that we could go back to is Cleason's, and Cleason's can do everything within their power to influence the behaviors of these companies, but ultimately, they do not have control. We wish they did, but they do not have control outside of their own company. The only clear way to control the actions of a third party is to put in place repercussions that are actually going to affect them, which would be a semi-ban. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Evie Russell, who will be followed by Denise Luzadder Young, and then Chad Parton. Sorry, Thad Parton.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Russell, go ahead.
On July 17, the Rules Committee discussed whether to skip the PNDs-- On July seventeen, the Rules Committee discussed whether to skip the PND step between the Land Use Commission and full council. NUSMA concluded the meeting stating, I quote, "I'll make an attempt of kind of summarizing what we're saying here is, don't do anything different. Land use to PND, PND to council if it passes PND. If it doesn't pass PND, it can die at PND. And if we need to make changes to our city code to reflect a practice, then we need to do that. Thank you to clarify the will of the council, the will of the Rules Committee." Second, NU's community benefits payments tied to the stadium operations as promised at LUC on October eleven, twenty twenty-three, quoting Northwestern Davis and Figora. Ten million to endow the workforce development. It's an upfront kind of investment that would then spit out of kind of an endow payout type on an annual basis. This means a ten million dollar payout depends on stock market conditions. At five percent, it's five hundred thousand dollars per year. If the stock market goes lower, it will be even less. Regarding the two million guarantee per year, NU states it will be part of that package. What, a two million split-out guarantee? Northwestern adds a cost, a concert ticket surcharge of half a million dollars a year to the school district. This depends on the surcharge of tickets sold. Northwestern has been owning city for fire and ambulance services for years, and that is a lot of money, and a fire truck or two doesn't cover the shortfall. When you add all the actual cash per year, it's at most two point five million minus what NU owes the city for services. Not much income for selling off our whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Denise Luzadder Young, who will be followed by Thad Parton and then Sidney Reed.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Denise Young. I lived on Dewey Avenue for about three years now in the Eighth Ward. I support Alderman Reed's proposed ban on semi trucks. When we moved to Evanston, we did our research, we looked at the business, drove by, and we saw that they were a small business that had several vans. And we support small businesses and hope that Cleason's continues to thrive and do well in our neighborhood. However, the eighteen-wheeler trucks are something that didn't show up until their busy season, and they have consistently been an issue every year since we've been here. Since June of twenty twenty-two, I know that there were several members, including the police department, that had a conversation with Cleason's, and they agreed to one particular item, which was appointment delivery times between the hours of seven thirty and one PM, but this is not happening. In fact, we recently had an issue on September eleventh, where an eighteen-wheeler arrived and idled right in front of our house at eleven forty-four PM. Again, at eleven forty-four PM. One of our neighbors were disturbed by this, woken up, and they went out and talked to the truck, and unfortunately, they were not able to have a productive conversation where the truck driver was able to understand that they were not supposed to be there at that time. So this keeps happening. Again, I know that conversation with Cleason's happened in June of twenty twenty-two. So unfortunately, it seems like Cleason's is unable to control these third-party truck deliveries that are driving through our small residential streets with eighteen-wheeler semis, and we support a complete ban. We support Cleason's as business again, and that they have smaller trucks that they use and vans, and we see them all the time, so we're unsure why they can't use those. So again, we would appreciate your support for this semi truck ban. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Thad Parton, who will be followed by Sidney Reed.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Thad Parton and Assistant Vice President of Restaurant Operations for Mather. As you're aware, Mather is headquartered in Evanston. We operate the Mather, a like-minded community in Evanston that includes four restaurant venues. Tonight, we'd like to join the Evanston Restaurant Community, expressing our concern with the proposed increase to Evanston's minimum wage ordinance. Please consider these three points. Mather implemented a fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage increase pre-pandemic over three years ago. This exceeded the Cook County minimum wage then, continues to exceed it today. Whether it's Mather or another senior living provider in Evanston, there's only so much of an increase in costs that older adults can absorb, many of which live on fixed incomes. Senior living communities provide high-cost, needed healthcare services. This places a more significant burden on our business compared to other non-healthcare businesses. And we're concerned that Evanston is making it more expensive for providers and businesses to operate compared to the city of Chicago and other areas of the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sidney Reed. It looks like there's not a Sidney Reed in the Zoom, in which case, let me just scroll back through and make sure that concludes public comment for the evening. So we now move on to special orders of business.
I will move participatory budgeting results for action, which includes, I guess, the allocation of the funding. Which parliamentary procedure, a second would be next.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that the city council authorized city manager to execute the projects that were approved by the participatory budgeting process vote. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I understand what is in front of us right now is approval of this expense, not a discussion of if or how participatory budgeting should be continued into the future. So I'm going to limit my commentary to that first topic of the financial request that is in front of us tonight. And I'll say from the onset that I am looking forward to proposing this. You know, I think I made that commitment going into participatory budgeting, that when this did come to council, I would gladly approve it based on the voice of the community members who have participated. So I am looking forward to doing that and making that approval. However, given the amount of money that we're talking about, which is, you know, just shy of three million dollars, I don't think it would be appropriate for council to approve that expense this evening, given the information that's in the memo. We have in front of us, you know, a high-level title of what's included for each project. And, you know, I've reviewed the materials that went into, you know, that as a community member, the community members could see, and these have been through a vetting process at the staff level. So I'm confident that we can, that they are approvable, but I just don't think it would be appropriate for us to approve such an expenditure of money without a lot more detail being, you know, being part of the record and to know exactly what we're approving. So I am going to make a motion, since this is a special order of business, it cannot be held. I will, not quite yet, I'd like to hear from my colleagues here, but I will be making a motion to table this to a date certain.
A few other people have lined up to speak, but Mr. Orin, do you want to give first summary of what's before us before we continue the discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I would be happy to, and this presentation is going to be mostly about what happened in the process. So, good evening, Mayor Biss, members of the city council. My name is Matt Orin. I'm the Participatory Budgeting Manager for the city of Evanston. I wanted to, and over the course of the past year, I've worked with participatory budgeting staff and technical assistants to run the participatory budgeting process. Tonight, I'm going to share with you all some of the information about the process, the participation that we were able to achieve, and of course, the results of the process. And I wanted to start with the people who participated. As the name suggests, it relies critically on the participation of the public. In the bottom left-hand corner, you can see a photo of our Spanish-language idea collection event. During the idea collection phase, we hosted twelve idea collection events, collected over thirteen hundred ideas for how the cities should allocate these funds, and we collected those from over three hundred different participants. And throughout the process, we have had outreach volunteers working together to do outreach. In the bottom right corner, you can see some of our outreach volunteers at a training. During the past year, we had over a hundred and fifty canvassing sessions where staff and volunteers went into the community to build community awareness and tell people about participatory budgeting. In the top right, you can see a photo from the proposal development phase, which followed idea collection. We had sixty-five community members come together over the course of seven months to work with city staff and develop proposals that will help improve Evanston. During this phase, the participatory budgeting brought together people who would have never met, but have one thing in common. They are interested in doing the work of making Evanston better. During the initial phases of participatory budgeting, we achieved some remarkable representation. As I look back at the initial city council action that authorized participatory budgeting, one of the stated goals was to reach people who are not typically engaged in the civic process. During idea collection and proposal development phases, we, approximately half of the participants had never been to a public meeting before, nor had they contacted a public official. The people who submitted ideas and developed them into the ballot came from all parts of the city. We achieved equitable representation, people of color, and lower-income populations in the agenda-setting phase of participatory budgeting. The culmination of these efforts came last month in September, when community members were able to vote for the proposals they wanted to see funded. We were able to build a list of thirteen thousand four hundred people who said they are interested in learning more about participatory budgeting. Over eight thousand six hundred people registered to vote, and six thousand five hundred and sixty-five community members decided to vote. Some wards in Evanston voted at higher rates than they do in municipal, some municipal elections. Eight point four percent makes us the second highest voter turnout of any participatory budgeting process in the country. A couple comparisons that I want to point out are that our nearest neighbors, Rogers Park, have typically get around one percent of their population to vote in their participatory budgeting process. And in their initial attempt at participatory budgeting, they got three percent of their population to vote. I also want to point out Grand Rapids, Michigan. They also elected to use ARPA funds to try participatory budgeting for the first time, and they were able to get about one percent of their population to vote, which is typical for participatory budgeting. I think this turnout is reflective of the effort that went into this process, as well as the civic spirit of Evanston. And the community members selected the following projects to fund. Mental health first aid training, grants, incentives for activities, and educational support for marginalized students in grades three through twelve. Evanston Urban Farm, Affordable Housing Subsidy, Affordable Refugee Housing, the Youth and Young Adult Drop-In Center, and Small Business Grants. After today's meeting, the next step will be to work with city staff to plan implementation for the following proposals. I'm happy to take any questions that you have that I can answer.
Thank you very much for that very helpful presentation. We now go to Councilmember Hadda Katis, followed by Reed, and then Harris.
Thank you. This has been, for me, the journey to where you folks are now, I remember hearing about this and thinking, this is a neat idea. And then, you know, inviting Professor Easterday to a ward meeting and seeing and hearing the presentation, having, you know, residents get interested, and it's really powerful to see how many folks show up at these meetings. And, you know, I'm ready today to vote and, you know, go forward with these proposals. I know they're, you know, as well thought out as things that we come up with. I think you guys probably do a better job of outreach and getting more people to provide feedback. I was just curious, you know, when we have the budget numbers and this, you know, we have a little bit left over, can you speak a little bit to what happened with the, because this didn't end up being exactly three million dollars, because that'd be really, yeah?
Yeah, so what happened from the outset of the process was we worked with a steering committee of community members to help write the rules for the process. And part of those rules were that if there is extra, the steering and leadership committee would allocate the funds if there was extra. And this previous week, they decided to allocate the funds proportionally to get as close to three million dollars as possible. So the total of the funds that you see before you is like five hundred dollars short of three million rather than the eighty-five thousand.
Great. And in other communities, because I know, you know, we had this windfall of ARPA money to start this program. In other communities, how have they budgeted participatory budgeting as a line item?
You'd think that's something that I would know, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I can jump in on that. So when I was in the clerk's office, we did quite a bit of research on this, and which is why I put forward PB. And for example, in the city of Chicago, the council members use a one point three million dollar allocation that they get for road improvements and for various other infrastructure improvements within their ward. One of, outside of Chicago, one of the first communities to have a PB process was Toronto, I believe, and Toronto used affordable housing dollars, if I am not mistaken. In Chicago also, there were TIF dollars that were used in the twenty-seventh ward, for example, and then in South America, and I think there are a number of places that just use kind of general fund dollars. But one of the recommendations that has been given by some of the PB experts is that the city focus on funds that have clear parameters, because it helps narrow in the ideas and ensure that they're feasible.
Great. Well, I just want to add, thank you all for all your hard work getting to this point, and I really appreciate it. And then I saw that the high school students left, but that was, for me, one of the more exciting parts is that, you know, young people have a voice, and it's, I think the results and seeing the kids here was really special.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Harris, followed by Revel.
Thank you. I want to add my voice to Councilmember Hadda Katis. I appreciate Councilmember Nusma's concern, but I am ready to move forward with supporting the projects. I think many of these have had, when, you know, we just spent about less than ten minutes up here discussing our four hundred and fifty million dollar budget amongst this body. There will be more time in the future, but these proposals have had a lot of vetting, a lot of interaction from the community and staff. You know, what we are doing here is we are allocating the funding for staff to now implement. That is the same as what we do with any other budget allocation or with most other budget allocation. So I would encourage us to move forward with supporting this tonight. Let's not make these folks drag out, come out again for another meeting unnecessarily to watch us do this. I think we've got the information we need to be able to move forward as we have in the past.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Revel, followed by Kelly.
Good evening. It works and sometimes it doesn't. So I just wanted to go on record to say, this is the best of what Evanston really has to offer. And before I took the seat, what I knew Evanston to be, very inclusive, very welcoming. I didn't see, I saw, how many people did we have? How many finalists did we have?
Twenty proposals were on the final ballot.
Okay, so I saw twenty proposals, and I saw no one bickering. I saw no one upset that somebody else was doing something against what they wanted. Everybody got along, wished each other well, sat at each other's places and talked about, oh, if you get it and I get it, how do we partner? And we've lost some of that in Evanston. Our residents, self-included, when I say residents, we've lost some of that. Our residents, self-included when I say residents, we've lost some of that. So I was very proud to see this in action, to see the different shades of Evanston, the different ages of Evanston, the different parts of Evanston come together to try to figure something out. This is what I sit on the council for, to represent all of Evanston, not just the second ward—that's where my vote rests—but to see all of Evanston be at its best. And I hope that we can continue to do that as a council, as a city, as a community, because that's the only way we get forward. When we invite, when we bicker, when we're always at each other, we don't move anywhere. We're stuck where we are. And I saw this move forward, and I was very proud. All of the volunteers, I appreciate you all. You all put in the hard work, the extra work. I appreciate that, and I think it's a great program. I do want to see it move forward. I am ready to vote on this. I hope we're tight in how we're going to do this, but I'm excited about this. And thank you so much for making this happen in our community, and I look forward to trying to do this more often.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Kelly.
Well, I want to echo my colleagues' appreciation for the amazing participation in this process and the diversity of, you know, ages and just everything that we saw—that we see here among you when you come to talk with us and that we've seen covered in our various media. So it's a really successful project. Your number-one goal was to engage as much of the community as you could, and you really, really succeeded with that. So I congratulate you, and I am committed to supporting the results of your voting. I have to say, though, I agree with Councilmember Nusma that I feel like I would like more information. I have some specific questions, if I could even ask you.
The next phase of the process is to—
Well, this is—this is specific questions about some of the awardees.
Yeah, so the next phase of the process is to work with staff to work on implementation. So if there are questions about implementation, that's the next step.
Right, well, I'll let you judge.
Okay, okay.
So, for example, the number one, the mental health first aid training, which I think is really valuable project, who is going to provide that training?
The proposal developed by community members identified a potential vendor that they thought would do a good job.
Okay, because I didn't see that in the material that I could click onto.
What will happen next is that the Health Department will sort of—that's sort of the next phase of the process—is that the Health Department will review the proposal that was provided to them and that they vetted over the course of several months. And then they will move forward as they see fit with a potential vendor.
Okay. I mean, I guess several of my other questions go to what I see as a pretty significant role for city staff in helping implement these various projects. And I guess I would have preferred to see that the leftover money go to the city to help cover the staff costs that are going to go into this implementation, I think.
So if I can respond to that, I do know that when the proposals were being developed, if it required staff time, we required that to be included in the initial proposal.
Oh, okay, all right. So the grand total for the various projects includes that?
Includes that.
Includes that, thank you. That's very helpful.
Point of information, if I could just note, there's also about $100,000 left over in the administrative budget as well that could support with implementation. And then last note is that, you know, if we were to spend this money ourselves, staff would still have to implement the proposals.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I'm very, very impressed with the enthusiasm and the participation. It seems like just—I've been won over more and more every time you all come forward and speak. The speeches have been very convincing, and government participation is so important for our city, for our democracy. So I—so thank you for all your work in that. I think that in itself is just tremendously valuable. So I also guess—I guess I'm wondering about process. I do feel like, to Councilmember Nusma's point, that maybe if we had a little more detail on it, that would help tighten it up also for, you know, future participatory budgeting. Some of these seem great, but they are pretty broad and vague, but good concepts. So I do wonder if that wouldn't be beneficial for everybody to have at least a couple of lines about expectations regarding—more direction about where that funding will go. Some of these, I think, are clearer. I think, like, small business grants, that, to me, seems pretty straightforward. But I would have to agree, I feel like I'd like to see—and I don't know if that's typical of participatory budgeting, where there's a more—a little more of an explanation about what's entailed with that, if that is par for course to include more, or if this is—
Hello, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. So I've been working with Matt a little bit on the actual rollout of the participatory budget process, which I do not have the ability to say quickly. But one of the things we discussed is the necessity to get some buy-in from the council that they wanted to move forward, because the next step of rolling out the implementation does require a significant staff investment. So I think the goal for tonight is not to give a blanket approval to all the projects, but rather to give some indication that there's support for this process. And then Matt will continue to work with staff to develop these and bring it back to council in saying, "This is what we're doing as the next step in detail."
Thank you.
Okay, that is the end of everyone asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to second crack, starting with Councilmember Nusma with 2:55 left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll say now, what I should have said first was that in terms of community engagement and community building and all the positive feelings that have developed out of this, those are awesome. Like, and that is really the most valuable takeaway from this process. So I'm enthusiastic about that, for sure. I think what the city engineer just said was maybe informative. And as I read the packet here, we're being asked not to authorize expenses, but to kind of authorize execution of these projects. And so if I could clarify, will expenses underneath these projects come back to us for approval as they come up?
Yeah, so these are funded through ARPA. All these projects are funded through ARPA, so as part of ARPA, we need to follow the normal purchasing procedures for the city. So I guess the short answer is yes, if it's over the threshold for that.
I'm not willing to authorize the expense right now without seeing a lot more information. We spent 10 minutes in AP&amp;W talking about a $30,000 park district thing. You know, that's the level of scrutiny that we need to apply to everything everywhere in this budget if we are going to try and keep as many people happy as we can. And so I don't want to—you know, I don't want to set up a situation where we are shortcutting any kind of council review, because ultimately, the buck stops with the city council. The community members who devoted the time and energy to this, you know, gives us all a good feeling. The fact that this went through a staff process with staff involvement helps us feel better. But city council needs to see the actual information before we can approve an expense. So I would be happy to approve this general allocation tonight, and that seems to be maybe more what the request is. And so I'm going to make that comment, and then also circle back to the excess. Is it—so is it $78,000 left over? If we add up those numbers—
I just want to flag that your time is up, so I ask you to be quick with this.
$500. $500.
So if I add those numbers up—
It's approximately $500. I did not—
It's $2,000 or $2,900, whatever.
$500.
Right. Now, so where—
$990.
What happened—that—where was that $78,000 coming from?
There's 80—there's going to be approximately $100,000 left in the ARPA—
Just a point of information, I think the number you're talking about is the original $85,000 that was left over that the leadership committee allocated.
That's what I'm talking—I guess—I'm saying 78, was it 85?
$85,000, yeah.
Okay, so there was 85, and the leadership committee sprinkled that—
Yeah, they—
There's still $500 left—or still $500 left over.
Correct. The leadership committee made the decision to fund the next project, if possible. Working with staff, it was determined it was not possible to partially fund the next project, and their backup option to that proposal was to fund each project proportionally to fund the increased funding for the remaining items.
And I think I could get behind approval of the projects that were presented, but I would like to have the leftover just go back into the bucket. We have plenty of other things we can spend that money on. If these projects needed more money, they could have asked for more money. And just—I don't think it's good budgeting practice to sprinkle leftover money around because we have so many other needs.
It's still the case that no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with four minutes left.
Wow, that's unusual. All right. I just—to the last point, I can see some logic behind the not just sprinkling the money. Maybe the—the leadership committee made their choice. I think it might have been better just to reserve the entire amount in case a single proposal needed the funding. But I don't want to, at this moment, question what the committee did without knowing their full discussion and logic. But—so I'm happy for us to move forward with this today. I think what I'm hearing from Councilmember Nusma is you aren't going to try to table this vote tonight, and so I think that's a good thing and helps keep the faith in the community that the council is committed to this process. And also, you know, I think as we go through this, I don't want the community concerned that any of these proposals—as long as, you know, there isn't some grand reason why they couldn't be implemented—that the council is committed to—just if—even if we disagree with it, or we don't think that it's the best use of money, that we are going to support these. And I want to keep that, you know, commitment that we have made to this process. As I close out, I just really want to say, I mean, thank you to all of the volunteers and the folks who made this possible, but truly, thank you, Matt. I think this—we threw you into a very turbulent waters. I think a lot of folks had no clue how this was going to play out in the beginning. I think both Matts were very concerned about whether we'd meet our timelines or be able to get this done, and you all have truly—and the whole team—to Celia, to Endona, the other two folks, and to all staff who participated in this. You folks have really, truly blown this out of the water, and I think the outcome is amazing. I hope there's a clear argument for us to continue doing this moving forward, and so I applaud you. I applaud all of you. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the city manager is authorized to execute the projects. This brings us to our consent agenda. I've come to the table with a long list of items I've already been asked to remove, so here they are. A 2, a 18, a 20, a 22, HS1, HS2, HS3. Yes, the items that are already—that have already been removed at others' requests are A2, a 18, a 20, a 22, HS1, HS2, and HS3. A 11.
A 17?
A 17.
And I'm sorry, A 20 was removed, is that correct? Yes.
Correct. All right, so the list I have at this time is A2, A11, A17, A18, A20, A22, HS1, HS2, HS3.
A 3? We didn't change anything. Okay, I'm okay.
All right, I would entertain a motion in that case.
I will move the—
Go ahead, go ahead.
I move the consent agenda minus the items that have already been announced.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves the consent agenda with the exceptions of A2, A11, A17, A18, A20, A22, HS1, HS2, HS3. Councilmember Harris seconds. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is passed. This brings us to item A2. Councilmember Nusma, would you care to make a motion?
I move item A2, approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity in the amount of $17,122.51.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage—moves approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Was Councilmember Harris the second? Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye abstained.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
An aye for Councilmember Reed, too.
With seven voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries, and the credit card activity is approved. This brings us to item A11. Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A11, Resolution 73-R-23, authorizing the city manager to sign notifications of grant awards to fund and operate a congregate senior meal program at the Levy Center and Fleetwood Jordan Community Center.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage of Resolution 73-R-23. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing no—Councilmember Harris.
Sorry about that, couldn't reach over my computer. I'd like for Parks and Rec, if they could talk to me about—I know, last year I talked about trying to use Meals on Wheels, and I didn't see them here, so I just wanted a little conversation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, Clerk Mendoza, Acting Manager Ogbo, and all city council members. So Meals on Wheels, as of 2023, was not on their RFP process. They were on the RFP process for 2024. However, their possible caterer rate was significantly higher than our current one. So currently, we are partnered with Hoffman House for 2024. We are a C1 bulk site, so that means we're—as of right now, they are charging us $5.35. Meals on Wheels came in at $6.50. So if we were to go with Meals on Wheels, we would lose about 18% of our units for our community, which means we would lose close to 1,000 units for—to be able to give out to our citizens.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense. I'm always going to push to be local, but if it isn't cost-effective, then most definitely we can't. And just a point of reference, he used to be my boss at the Levy Centers.
Will the clerk, avoiding any potential conflicts of interest that arise from that exchange, please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and Resolution 73-R-23 has passed. Councilmember Nusma?
Point of—if—I pulled off A17, and I believe maybe A20, I don't know.
Those are both removed, that's right.
What I'm saying is, I don't need separate discussions for each of those. What I'm saying is, I don't need separate discussions for each of those. If, I don't know who pulled off A18, but we can move A18, I'm sorry, A17.
Well, actually, somebody, so different people pulled off A20 and A17, so I think we're probably better off
Okay.
doing them separately.
So next is A17?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I will move item A17, Ordinance 103023, amending Title IX, Chapter II, Section III, fees changed to increase ambulance fees.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage for introduction of Ordinance 103023. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Did someone else pull this off? No, okay, so this one was me. I pulled A17 off and the same would have had A18 and A20 off for a procedural question. A17, A18, and A20 are all ordinance revisions that change our policy on the fees that we charge for certain services. It is in our rules that no item shall appear on a committee agenda or the council agenda if it has not been referred and if it's a policy change. And I'm just trying to understand how changing these fees are, how that is not a policy change.
You know, we had a brief text exchange about this on Friday. As I said in that text exchange, I'll say publicly, I think this one is a gray area. Every time I get the draft budget from staff, I do scan it for items that I think, I just scan to see whether there's anything that, you know, feels to me like it should have gone through the referral process. And sometimes I do, in fact, remove things, and other times I don't. These feel, you know, a flat numerical fee that increases from time to time as costs go up and inflation occurs, doesn't hit me as really clearly a policy change. You know, if anything, the policy change, I mean, not to mix items, as you encourage us not to, but the policy change relative to the water rate was a state law passed, fortunately, in my view, passed a mandate that we replace all the lead service lines. And now we're just kind of mechanically changing the water rate to facilitate payment for that. So I'm happy to follow the council. If the council thinks this is a bad call, I'm happy to rein it in. But that was the view that I brought to the decision.
Okay. Well, then, I would be interested to think if, you know, I may want to see an increase in the opt-out fee for Affordable Housing Fund. And you could look at that as just a mechanical increase, because with inflation and all of these other things, I think that, you know, if I were to bring that up, that folks would say, nope, you're not getting that right on an agenda. That requires two cosponsors. If my colleague, Councilmember Kelly, who both of us disagree greatly on parking, said, hey, I would like to decrease the parking rates in the city, because I think there's going to be economic benefits to that. And it's, you know, because of inflationary increases, we want to make Evanston more attractive, whatever the argument may be. I personally wouldn't want to see that on an agenda without cosponsorship. And I just think that we have to have a clear line as to what requires referral and what doesn't. And currently, the line in our rules says, if it's a policy change, these are ordinances which indicate policy, and it is changing a fee. Now, earlier in the evening, we did adopt another ordinance, which was the giving away of, I think, surplus vehicles potentially. But that was an ordinance, but clearly not a policy, because giving away a vehicle is not a policy, but this is. And so I just, I just would love to understand what the clear line is, so we're moving forward properly. And separate of that, I thank staff for coming up with these revenue ideas. I think the ambulance fees make sense from my understanding of what has been shared. This will not be a fee that impacts your everyday Evanston resident. This will be transferred on to their insurance companies. And so I think this particular policy is a good one. But I would like clarification on what the line is. And I don't know if your answer really satisfies me, because your answer was just, it was a gray area, and that, that still leaves it in a gray area. And so I'd like it not to be gray.
Councilmember Revelle, followed by Kelly.
Well, I don't think I'm going to pretend to clarify all the gray areas here, but I guess, to me, if we are considering increasing a fee that we already have been imposing, that would be something that wouldn't need a referral, because it doesn't seem to me like a new policy. But if we were suddenly to say, I'm going to, we want to impose a fee on some activity that we've never imposed a fee on, that would, to me, be a policy, so.
Just point of information. So from your view, if I wanted to put forward a proposal to increase the motor fuel tax, would not require a referral?
I, I would put that in, I would say, go ahead and try.
I'll answer that question, yeah, I think so. I think there's some of the examples you gave. So like, for example, you talked about the fee in lieu for the
Building on-site affordable.
Yes, for the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. That, to me, is like, sort of on the other side of the gray area, because we talk so often about wanting to do a holistic assessment of that Inclusionary Housing Ordinance as a policy and change a variety of factors of it to continue improving it. And, you know, the fee is one component of that, and probably we would both agree that the fee should be incorporated in that broader discussion, which is clearly a policy discussion. But I think, yeah, like, if you were to work with the Chair of APW and say, I think we ought to have a motor fuel tax increase that's, you know, again, consistent with keeping it in line with inflation, I don't think that I would have a disagreement that that kind of thing could happen without a referral. I'm sorry, we're talking to each other, but Councilmember Revelle has the floor. Councilmember Kelly, then.
Thank you. So, you know, I support A17, but I do agree that I think our definitions of what, that referrals have to be policy or reflect a policy change is incredibly broad and vague and open to too much interpretation. So I would, I'd like to see if we can tighten up what, what requires referral. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion.
Just point of order. I would say that, since this is a gray area, my apologies, I meant to say this upfront. Since there is a gray area, I would suggest that we suspend the rules. Just to, I mean, it seems kind of pointless, but I do think that we should at least take that action if we're going to move forward.
Will you, will your motion include a retroactive rule suspension for two weeks ago?
No.
Okay.
We just made a mistake then.
All right, well, go ahead. I'm not going to, I'm not going to rule it out or let's just make the motion.
Sure. I move that we suspend the rules for item A17, A18, and A20.
Councilmember Reed moves that the rules are suspended so that items A17, A18, and A20 can be, can be voted on, notwithstanding the fact that they were not heard by the referrals committee. Councilmember Burns seconds. Councilmember Kelly, your light is on, is that to speak to this motion?
It is to speak to the motion.
Councilmember Kelly?
I just think that there's so much on all of our agendas that can be interpreted as policy. So I think your point is, again, I think that I would like to see staff come back with a tightened explanation as to what is required. I think saying policy doesn't mean anything. And I could, I feel like I could take off most of these and ask to suspend the rules, because, you know, in APW, so much could be interpreted as reflecting, being policy, just like this. So I, I don't think we should be doing this with this tonight. But I do think we should have a clear understanding of what requires a referral.
Councilmember Reed?
I'd be happy to withdraw my motion. I mean, I don't know if we have to act on these today, similar to Councilmember Nusma's concern earlier about, about PB. I do think that there are still, particularly for some of these, some outstanding questions that could be answered. I would be supportive of withdrawing my motion, and I think they should go through the referrals process, would be my opinion. And I would even be willing to cosponsor a number of these.
I mean, I'll just say that I don't agree with your read of the rules. So if you withdraw the motion to suspend the rules, I will still call for a vote on the underlying motion. Which I think is the appropriate thing to do.
I withdraw my motion.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we are operating in a gray area, I might suggest that this is something that the Rules Committee could take up. We've made up our own rules regarding the referrals. It's up to council to direct staff, not the other way around. So I'm just offering that suggestion. A referral to the Rules Committee. But I'm ready to vote on the underlying motion here.
In that case, will the clerk please?
If, I'm sorry, one last question, if I have time. I am, so, I just want to remind us of what the referrals process was about. It was about creating a clear, transparent, and if I'm wrong or not capturing anything, please let me know. But it's about creating a clear, transparent process so residents could follow what policies the city is considering and enacting, and how they get assigned, and to help us control staff time. I would see particularly these fees that are, and I think it also ensures that the public knows who's essentially responsible for putting those ideas forward. And I think particularly with fees that will lead to making Evanston less and less affordable, it is important for the, for the public to know who's essentially responsible for this. I mean, everyone who votes for it tonight will be, in some essence, but who was the thought leader on this, and, you know, have the opportunity to very clearly see through the referrals tracker what's coming down the pike. So I think we can take this to rules, but I would encourage us to be clear about this. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
You have a hand up.
Councilmember Saffredin, we couldn't hear your vote.
Yeah, aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Councilmember Revelle? Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Ordinance 103023 is passed for introduction and will be on our agenda in three weeks for action. The next item on the agenda is item A18. Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A18, Ordinance 105023, amending City Code, Section 8-4-11, to revise sanitation service charges. This is for introduction.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage of Ordinance 105023 for introduction. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Hand up. Is there a reason that this has to be done ahead of the budget discussion, since this functions pretty much in the same way as a tax increase? There's no way to opt out. It hits property owners the same way a tax increase does. Do we need to do this separately from the budget, or is this something that can go simultaneous with the budget? And I suppose that's a question for Edgar.
Honorable Mayor Bis, Clerk Mendoza, members of the city council, Acting City Manager Ogbo, Noel Rodriguez, Public Services Bureau Chief. We are having to increase the rates at this time due to the budgeting and the net deficit that we have identified.
Okay, so we can't hold this, I don't want to say hold, this can't be delayed until the entire budget, potential property tax increases, all those things are understood, since they all hit property owners the same way? You need to, you need us to move forward on this now?
That can, at the direction of the council, that can take place, but it is recommended to move forward at this time.
Okay. I'll just say, I think that we should look at, you know, what we're doing to potentially increase the total costs of living in Evanston. I'm not weighing in on the necessity for this increase at all. It certainly could be a necessary thing, but it's gonna, this and the water increase and a potential property tax increase are all going to hit the same people. And I think it's prudent, if possible, to look at all of those things in totality rather than cafeteria them, you know, at different, on different timelines. So that's all I would say.
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, thank you for that. This one, I would support a tabling of this. I do think that there is information that we don't have that would be useful for us to really dive into this before we move forward. One, I'll note, to one point Councilmember Saffredin made, you know, is this, is this necessary now? Well, I don't quite know. We have a $1.2 million, and please correct me if I'm wrong, $1.2 million surplus in the solid waste fund?
That would not be correct, no.
What is the correct number, then?
Currently, we are projected to end at about $600,000 in 2024. The current number for '23, I can look into that and provide that at a later time.
Why, we're making a decision now?
Understood, I don't have that necessarily
I'm very sure it's 1.2. Hattas is pulling up the number.
The projected beginning fund balance, which would be ending at this year, would be about $980,000.
$980,000?
Right.
And is that minus the 200-some-odd thousand for the Swink roof, for the Swink facility?
No, that's going to be taken into account in 2024.
That'll be taken, okay. So still, we're ending with roughly a million dollar balance in that fund. And that is all excess, not excess reserve, I'm sorry, that is our 16.66% policy. And given what has been shared to the Finance and Budget Committee about the potential outstanding liabilities that would need to be charged to that account, the only thing that we know of right now sitting out there is the Swink building. That's something we can account for in budgeting. And with trash collection, with solid waste collection, what are the unforeseen emergencies that we can expect to pop up in a year? I mean, I don't know where, you know, a vast increase in cost could occur.
Yeah, that could be anywhere from equipment costs, unforeseen expenditures, where we're trying to acquire additional vehicles. Additionally, too, even our property installments, property tax installments, there have been delays, one that happened this year, about, that's about $650,000. And not having that available funding does put us in the
Equipment, I mean, I mean, yes, we have the recycling, we handle recycling internally, but we contract out to LRS Group to, to handle the trash collection for us. So if one of their trucks breaks down, that doesn't impact us at all.
That would be the equipment here for the city of Evanston.
So that's just for recycling?
Correct.
Which is pretty, you know, comparatively a much smaller operation than our trash collection.
That is correct. But we do have a situation right now where we have two trucks that are way outside of their life expectancy. And because of that, it's important that we still have chain manufacturing issues with acquiring some of these vehicles. So at the moment, we're, we've already purchased chassis that is expected to be produced in 2024, and we're looking to try to purchase another truck in 2024 because of those uncertainties. The funding, having that, that funding would definitely benefit to acquire those vehicles.
But we've got a, Director Kano, see the ear?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Bis, members of the committee. Edgar Kano, Public Works Station's director. I do want to say, the reason why we do have a little bit extra right now in our reserve fund is because we have not been able to purchase vehicles in the last two years. So because of that, we are on a 10-year replacement cycle. 2021 was the last time we were actually able to put in an order, so we weren't able to get one for '21, '22, and it doesn't look like we're going to be getting the '23 now till '24. So that's where some of those reserve funds stacked up. However, because we are behind, we're looking into, trying to catch up to purchase those vehicles at a cost of about $380,000 to $430,000 per vehicle. So again, that is why we're looking into that increase.
And that will draw down on the reserve, not on?
Correct. And that's why we have the reserve as high as it is now.
Okay. And what is the, what would the reserve balance be if we were just meeting the 16.66%?
If we were, we had $1.2 million if, for us to
Oh, so it would be 1.0, okay.
Yes. And we're not there right now. And if we do not get any increases, proposed increases in 2024 or 2025, and we have to ramp up the purchase of vehicles, we will go into negative also in the reserves.
Right. So I guess with all of that in mind, yes, there are challenges. There's a reason we're asking for this. But what I'm hearing is that maybe we could hold off on this and vote on this with our budget and take a more holistic look at at, um, at the service. And also note, this actually isn't something that hits everyone evenly, uh, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but this only would apply to our residential, um, service providers, not to our commercial, um, or, or to our residential users, not to our commercial users. Is that correct?
Correct, this does not have to do with the, uh, commercial.
Yeah, um, so it, it has a, has a slightly disproportionate impact on homeowners and renters are kind of saved from this potential increase here. I, I'm going to move to, uh, hold this, uh, or, I mean, I, certainly until our next meeting, but I think tabling this until November twenty-seventh, is that when we're slated to adopt our budget?
So first of all, if you were to hold it, it would just appear on November thirteenth?
I know, on the next.
If you wanted to follow what Councilmember Sufferden was kind of implying and have it track the budget, because this, like the budget, is an ordinance and this is for introduction, it would want to come back for introduction on November thirteenth.
Yeah. So I...
Which is the same as holding it.
So I, to not even take the chance, I move to hold this, uh, hold this.
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Sufferden moves, uh, Reed moves to hold this item. Councilmember Kelly seconds, uh, motion to hold having been seconded. Uh, this item is held and will appear on the November thirteenth city council agenda. That brings us to item A twenty. Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A twenty, ordinance ninety-seven oh twenty-three, amending city code seven twelve seventeen, charges, rates, fees, and penalties.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves, uh, passage of ordinance, uh, ninety-seven dash oh dash twenty-three. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I, I would, this is appearing for action. I would like to, uh, hold this as well. Um, the, I sit on the Equity Empowerment Commission and there are a number of questions that the EEC has about particularly the affordable rate, um, and how, uh, the city plans to ensure that folks, um, who are eligible for the affordable rate are, are actually getting on to it. And there are concerns about, you know, uh, in order to qualify for the affordable rate, you have to be LIHEP eligible, correct? Uh, well, please correct my understanding.
Good evening, Darryl King, Water Production Bureau Chief, Mayor Biss, members of the city council, uh, city manager Ogbo, city clerk Mendoza. So the, uh, the qualification for the affordable rate changed. We, we brought that back last year. Initially, it was through LIHEP. Uh, the, the registrations were very low, um, and, and we, we couldn't get much support from the body that, that, uh, manages the LIHEP program. So now we, uh, the qualifier is, and the name just changed, the Evanston Access Program that's run through the Parks and Rec, uh, department. And in terms of, you know, if there are questions about, you know, how rate increases would impact the affordable rate, uh, these, uh, uh, rate increases would not impact the affordable rate at all. What we do is we have a third party every three years review our current affordable rates, and that's something that's happening right now. And, but that's, that's independent of this process.
And, uh, what are the eligibility criteria for the EAP, for the Evanston Access Program?
I believe it's like thirty or thirty-five thousand, uh, for a household of one and like sixty thousand or less for a household of two.
So this is based on federal poverty line, it seems like, and maybe that sounds like...
I believe so.
Four hundred? What, what percentage of the federal poverty line are we looking at with those numbers?
I, I don't, I don't have that percentage.
I do know that, just because I was looking this up recently, for a family of three, that two hundred percent of the poverty line is, uh, thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand dollars. And, and then how many folks do we have signed up currently for the affordable rate?
It's like a hundred and seventy-seven.
And we would estimate that how many, what percentage of Evanstonians would be eligible for this affordable rate based just on census data that we have?
So our initial...
I'd imagine it'd be somewhere around, I know that generally it's about, you know, whenever you look at poverty statistics, it's generally about fourteen to seventeen percent of Evanstonians are, um, you know, struggling in some way.
So I don't have a percentage. Our initial estimate was roughly six hundred folks would qualify for it within Evanston. So when we first introduced this affordable rate to city council, we were estimating six hundred households in Evanston would qualify for LIHEP.
Okay. But we, we, we do, I, I would imagine that all of us up here have the understanding that there are far more than six hundred households in our city that have, um, you know, uh, issues with being able to afford to stay here and particularly afford something like water. And so I, I think that the numbers, while I remember when I first asked this question, the number of folks signed up was seventeen. Um, and so, you know, truly kudos on moving the, the, the ball, um, um, there, but I, I, I don't think we are quite, I don't think we're getting the information out there well enough about the affordable rate. I would move, are there other lights on? No, I, I would move to, uh, table the, and to, I'm going to move to hold this actually, um, as well to our next meeting. I think there's more information. I'd love to have time to sit down with, uh, with, with you and I'm sure other folks would to figure out how we can get more, uh, folks on the affordable rate. And the, as I said, the Equity Empowerment Commission, um, I think would like to get involved here as well to help us, uh, think through how we can, um, uh, better provide water to folks in an equitable way.
Uh, Councilmember Reed, I, um, did not fully appreciate the multimedia, uh, situation we're in. There was a digital light, uh, so I'll go, I'll go to Councilmember Sufferden and then back to...
Okay, yes, I will.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I have a similar question. Do you need this tonight or can we, uh, have this happen concurrently with, uh, the budget discussions?
Uh, sorry, one second, Councilmember. There's a sidebar conversation that I think has got to end before your question can be heard. Mr. Kent, Councilmember Sufferden has a question for you.
Hey, um, do you need this tonight or can we, uh, afford the time to have this, uh, along with the budget discussion that's going to proceed in the next month?
So, uh, it would ultimately be up to the city council. It does, it doesn't have to go tonight, uh, but the recommendation is that it goes, um, you know, before the end of, of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so, so that's the, the real, uh, like deadline is having this as part of the twenty twenty-four budget for your department?
That's correct.
Okay, um, then i- if it's possible, I would agree, uh, to, uh, to hold off on this tonight and have this be part of the ongoing, uh, discussion because, uh, similar to what I said about, uh, the waste fees, I mean, this, this hits, uh, people in a similar manner with tax increases, you can't opt out, rather it's a necessity, et cetera.
So does that, does that mean that you're seconding the motion to hold, Councilmember?
Uh, yes.
All right, so Councilmember Reed moves to hold item A twenty. Uh, Councilmember Sufferden seconds, the motion to hold having been made and seconded, the item is held. And that brings us to item A twenty-two. Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A twenty-two, ordinance one oh eight oh twenty-two, amending city code section ten eleven thirteen, schedule thirteen.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage of ordinance one oh eight dash oh dash twenty-two. Councilmember Reed seconds. Uh, Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I, I, um... The folks from Clessen are not here tonight. Um, there, there was information that was shared with us, uh, in the packet, um, about measures that Clessen has taken to, um, try to mitigate the, the issues in the neighborhood. Um, I, I shared that with neighbors and neighbors, and neighbors have shared with all of us tonight that they feel as though, um, those measures have not been successful. I've been kicked from the Zoom, but I had, uh, and I'll, I'll save us the time and I'll just email it to folks. But there are also a number of videos that residents shared with me that show the trucks on, uh, their street, uh, and really provide a clear picture of, of what the issue is. At this moment, I would, I would, based on, so I met with myself, Councilmember Burns, Sergeant Brown, uh, met with the owners of Clessen, um, a, a week or so ago. And I do think that they are, I think that they have genuinely made an effort to improve the situation here. I also genuinely think they've just outgrown the space. They have a greenhouse that is not a greenhouse and it's converted into an office space. I don't even know if that's code compliant, um, but they're, they're, it just seems as though they've outgrown the space. Um, I, at this moment, um, would understand that if we were to implement this right now, this would harm their business as it exists today, um, while acknowledging that their business is causing harm to the community as it exists today. Um, I, I would like to table this to give more time to, uh, to, to, to try to work this out. I, I do think that, uh, you know, um, you know, maybe there's... I, I will say, part of the issue is, I, I think they realize they've outgrown the space. The, the problem is that their space is zoned R1, um, and they're using it commercially and it just is not profitable for them to sell their space and move somewhere else right now. Or it's not financially feasible right now for them to, uh, sell their space and move somewhere else. And so I, I, I would like to continue having, I would like the opportunity to continue having conversations with them. Um, we are in approaching another kind of smaller busy season for them, um, in the fall where they have, uh, a slight uptick. Uh, but we do have time between now and, uh, their next busy season next summer, uh, to work collaboratively to figure out a solution if there's, if the city can work with them to figure out, um, something that will not, um, do this. Uh, and, and so I, I would like to, uh, move to table this, uh, to our, um, um, to our June, their first meeting in June.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Reed moves to table item A twenty-two, the, to the first meeting in June two thousand twenty-four, a time that amazingly will in fact occur. Uh, Councilmember Kelly seconds. Uh, I have a few lights, but is there any discussion on the motion to table? Uh, see, okay, Councilmember Nusma?
This has, this is like a zombie that keeps coming back. Right, this, I think first came to council, uh, on November twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two, so almost a year ago. Then again, uh, July twenty-fourth, September eighteenth, October ninth, and now the twenty-third. I was hoping that, to hear from Clessen directly tonight and was kind of sympathetic to the business, but, uh, they're not here. We heard from a bunch of neighbors and, and I kind of got swayed, uh, by the, by the pub- public comment tonight, so I...
Okay, I mean, if folks are willing to...
So I do think there's one piece of information here?
I'm here. I, I was here earlier. I, I thought the issue was being removed. I'm representing the business.
He misunderstood what consent, what it meant to be pulled off consent agenda.
Okay, okay. So we do have a representative from Clessen who I would love to hear from at this point.
Uh, so Troy, would you be willing then to kind of share your thoughts on the situation?
Yes, yes, aye. Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, we can.
Yeah, sorry about that. I, I, I was here earlier. I thought the issue was being removed. Um, but, so I, I kind of have missed what you guys have discussed, uh, just in the last five minutes. Um, but what I can say is that, um, you know, since we had the original meeting, um, with the community policing unit in June of twenty twenty-two with Sergeant Brown, who, um, we have been, you know, in communication with, we put together, together several mitigation measures, um, that we instituted in twenty twenty-three. Those all, um, went into place this year and they involve moving our inbound deliveries to dock appointments. And, uh, we've partnered with the Home Depot on Oakton to have a staging area for our trucks in case any of the third-party trucks, uh, arrive before or after their appointment and they cannot be, um, dealt with. We've also done some different training procedures, um, with our staff on how to handle, uh, a semi-truck that arrives when there is no, the unloading, unloading space is currently being occupied by another vehicle. Um, we have been in communication, um, with Sergeant Brown and, um, Chief Stewart, and I, I am under the understanding that there has only been one service call in twenty twenty-three made to the police about the, the semi-truck traffic. Um, so I, I feel like we have been engaging on this issue, um, and we've been trying to put different procedures in place to make sure that trucks are not showing up overnight, that we don't have too many trucks showing up at once, and we're trying to get trucks into the property safe, uh, safely as possible.
All right, thank you. So the motion on the table is to, uh, is to table this?
Is to table this until the, right, and so, yeah, so to, if the motion on the table now passes, this will be, this will go into, I guess, sort of, it'll go back into wherever zombies go and then, uh, come to life in the second Monday of June.
I, and I do appreciate, uh, the challenge that Councilmember Reed faces, trying to balance conflicting interests that are, uh, equally valid. Um, I think since this has dragged on a year, I'm prepared to not table it, to vote it down tonight. If, uh, the issue, uh, pops back up or the neighbors remain unsatisfied, this can always come back again. So that, that's going to be my take.
And, and Chair, my hand is up just so you know.
Councilmember Sufferden followed by Hatakakis followed by Burns.
Uh, thanks, actually, I'm cool. I was going to just ask those everybody from the business, so, uh, I will cede my time. Thank you.
Councilmember Hatakakis followed by Burns.
Um, I was wondering, anyone from EPD is here to an, to, I'd like to ask him a question. So, um, I'll also comment like, folks, it's, you have to use three one one, please log calls. If there is something going on, it, it helps us a lot to have data and a paper trail to, to make these sorts of decisions. Um, but one of my questions is, if they're there idling, that's a ticketable offense. So, um, I know the, one of the residents, you know, said that they talked to the driver and they were uncooperative, but at that point, you can, that's, you can call someone and they can come, but, um, there's no one here that, uh, anymore from, who could answer that question, I guess.
I, I can respond, uh, based on, um, uh, resident experience and, and what I've heard from, from residents. And while, uh, yes, idling is a ticketable offense, so is, we, we had a whole conversation here about public drinking and that being a ticketable arrestable offense. And the conclusion was, well, it is hard to actually a- arrest somebody for, for public drinking unless you actually catch them with the alcohol, uh, in the moment that they're, they're taking a, a sip. And similarly here with, uh, the idling, an officer would have to just sit there for five minutes, you know, with a timer, watching someone idling. Um, you know, the, the, the problem isn't just the idling, the pro, you know, which is with the vehicle on. The problem is the vehicles being there. These vehicles, the refrigerators have to be on, so while the, the cab could potentially be off, the refrigerated rear portion of the vehicle, uh, could still be on. And I don't think that counts as idling under our, our code. And so there, there's a whole host of nuanced issues and I'm in the lineup somewhere and so I don't want to go beyond your question. But, and then I will say that a number of residents have...
So, so Councilmember Hatakakis has the floor. If he wants to continue just letting you talk, that's fine, but...
I, I don't think there's anyone here to answer my question, but I think that you bring up a good point about the refrigeration because if they're there staged and they're not supposed to be there, our traffic control should be able to say, hey, can you just go to Home Depot and wait to unload how you should? Because I mean, you know, you have, you get this all the time when, you know, you don't, third parties, you know, you can give the best instructions, they don't always follow them. It's not, it's not necessarily Clessen's fault, but, um, maybe that's something that we can work with, uh, our police department to figure out.
Councilmember Burns?
Uh, yes, as Councilmember Reed said, I, I went out to...
Uh, yes, as Councilmember Reed said, I, I went out to the location with Councilmember Reed and, and met with, and met with the owners. I, I would actually say at this time, there's not enough information to, to pass this. It will quite significantly impact the business and we don't have enough information. We just had a conversation about trucks idling. The, 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 the point is that they should be at Home Depot, right? Like, we don't want somebody idling at, at 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM or whatever it is. So what's important, as, as Troy said, is that they've, this summer, they put in place a new policy that requires drivers to, to go to the Home Depot. And it's encouraging them and they're keeping track of it. And they've already said that they're committed to no longer working with trucking companies that don't abide by their rules. So again, the, the conversation for me is not about, you know, idling. It's, it's doing whatever we can to get them in, in the proper staging area. And then obviously during the day is less of an issue in terms of noise because construction hours and comes into play. I also want to say that, that I, I, I also agree with Councilmember Haddikatis. I think it is incredibly important that people use, that when they, when, when they experience this, that they call 911, you know, use 911, the night, non-emergency line, however it works, and 311. Not only so we can get, make sure that, that all the reports are accounted for, but also so they can be verified. Like, that's the, the, the point of using these systems. And if this was happening in the fifth ward, I, it's the same advice I give people. Call 911, call 311 first, and then if you need backup, you can call me. But, and, and if you need a little bit of extra advocacy. But as Councilmember Haddikatis said, it is so important to these type of policy decisions that we have data to back it up. And having been in the meeting with Sergeant Brown, I, I think we, we came back with maybe two calls in the last, I can't remember what the timeframe is, the last year or so. And so I, I would support a table so that we can allow time for data to come in, to know if, if this is working or not. But based on the conversations I've had, not only with Councilmember Reed, the business, and going to the site myself and checking it out, I, I do not think we have enough information to negatively impact this business in the way it would if we were to pass this at this time. So I would encourage my colleagues to support a, a table at this point.
So Chief Stewart has joined us. Welcome, Chief. So why don't we go back to the previous question now because I don't know how constrained your time is. Councilmember Haddikatis, do you want to repeat your question for Chief Stewart?
I have to quick remember what I actually asked, but so.
You were basically asking about enforcement of the no idling.
Yeah, so in, in this, in this situation, if a resident sees a, a semi truck idling, it's not supposed to be there, and they call EPD, you folks show up, what can you folks enforce via like the idling or, and also just the truck being there? Because I think the desire would be for you folks to be able to say, hey, look, you're in the wrong spot. There's already a plan. Please go to Home Depot. Like, how, how would your staff handle that?
Chief Stewart with the police department, respectfully, Mary, City Council Mendoza, Clark Mendoza. We haven't had any incidents over there, but if we do, we'd like to verify. I believe we've been working with Thomas and his son in trying to identify if they even belong to the business at this point. But we try to take proactive measure to deter them. And if not, look at the ordinance regarding enforcing that. But I believe from the meeting, we only had maybe two calls since I think January. And this was first put on the radar of the business owners by a neighbor that was here at the last council meeting. But I know Sergeant Brown is currently in London. She's been working with them. And to be quite frank, we haven't had any issues that have been reported directly to us to even identify. I know some things came up at a meeting, reference through traffic, possibly a bu, a bus that comes over by that location. But it has not been an issue for us. Or the business owners have worked with us with no problem.
Okay, and, and you all have all, we aren't missing any ordinances or tools for you folks to help them along or anything? It's just, and we haven't had any calls, so.
No, I think we have every, everything we need to enforce if, if we can identify who these individuals are that may be doing it, you know? And I don't know if Troy went into this or if the business owners like to speak. I, I know they even went so far as to open up a business in another jurisdiction to try to alleviate the issue over there in that area.
Thank you, Chief Stewart. Thanks very much. At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go to second, uh, second cracks, beginning with Councilmember Reed with a minute 20 left.
Thank you. Very quickly, so Chief Stewart, the ordinance here requires that the vehicle is idling for five minutes, correct?
If you're reading it, that'd be correct. I, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just ran up yours.
Yes, and so that would mean that your officers would have to observe the vehicle for five minutes idling in order to issue a citation.
Yes, that's what's in the ordinance.
Yeah.
We'd have to be on, on scene.
On scene and just kind of sit around for five minutes and then issue a ticket. And so, you know, one, I, I appreciate, one, I will say that, again, residents have been mostly communicating with myself and with some city staff rather than calling 911 and 311 over the last year. As was just shared by residents, September 11th, just a few days ago, or a few months, a month ago, there was a, a, a truck that was on the block. I have some videos. I couldn't get into the Zoom. Someone isn't letting me in. But again, I will send that to, to show folks what, I just got let in, all right. But to show folks what this looks like in reality. I, I, right, this isn't a new issue. As residents mentioned, as, who I think is now gone, this has been going on before my term. Councilmember Rainey, uh, uh, back in 2016 tried to address this issue. So this is nothing new and this has been a, a great concern. And yes, they have opened a new location. I wish they would switch all of their semi truck activity to that location because it's not in a residential area. But that is not the case. I think that by tabling this, I understand folks' fatigue and seeing this over and over again, particularly folks who have been on APW have seen this for quite a while. But I think now that, you know, as a result of this, we brought the Klessens back to the table. They have made, I know my time is coming up. They've, they've made improvements.
It happened.
It happened, all right. They've made improvements. The neighbors honestly are not sharing that they are feeling those improvements. But in all fairness, what I am requesting is that we table this until the first meeting in June to allow us to, you know, here, residents are hearing. You need to call 311 every single time there is a truck in front of your location. Call 311, call the police, create the record. I have some colleagues who seemingly might have voted, maybe I shouldn't have talked and we could have just voted this down. But I think in all fairness, giving the Klessens an opportunity to truly address this, I'm wrapping up now. To truly address this is, is, is appropriate. So again, I will move, if I didn't get a second.
You moved, you got a second.
I moved, got a second.
There's more lights, all right. So, Councilmember Wen.
Yes, I suggest that Mr. Klessen give his phone, his cell phone number to the neighbors. Because my house is directly across the alley from Benny's and before that it was Whole Foods. And we had a continuous problem with idling trucks, trucks that would arrive before they were supposed to at Whole Foods. And I would go over and talk to the store manager over and over again. We finally got the signs up. We finally got Whole Foods to start penalizing any truck that arrived. And, but it took continuous phone calls and it took my constant presence there. But I think that clearly third-party trucks are difficult to control. But I think the one thing that we haven't heard here is the phone number of the business that should be, that should be reachable at all hours. If a truck is arriving at 11:45 at night and idling, the business owner should know that and they should know it immediately. So I would be willing to support the hold if Mr., if Troy gives his cell phone number to all of the residents in the neighborhood. And then let's be done with this.
Can, I don't know if Troy's still there. Can Troy speak? He has been working with some of the drivers. Troy, you want to speak on that and the efforts made to identify who's in violation and what the steps you guys will take moving forward?
That was shared a little bit earlier. Troy shared that, you know, they, and, and our staff shared that they agree that they would stop working with folks who.
Well, I think, I mean, so is Troy, Troy, do you want to respond to this?
Yeah, I, so what we, what we've done is we, we give a letter at the beginning of the, um, each shipping season to the transportation partners and we let them know, these are the delivery parameters for a police and wholesale. And we fully support, you know, ticketing or any consequences that come with them operating outside of the parameters. If we know that, you know, truck A was, you know, here, then we, we have the chance to, you know, ourselves, hold them accountable and not, and not work with them again.
Point of information, has that happened yet? I mean, the residents are sharing that, for example, on September 11th and a number of other instances. So have you ever passed on a penalty to any?
Sorry, not mean to cut you off, but we, I, I was, we have not been, um, we, like Chief Stewart said, I'm only aware of what was, you know, reported to the police. So if we can start getting, you know, those complaints going there, we'll be made aware and then we can hold those people accountable.
So thus far, you've held no one accountable for this?
So then, Councilmember Wen has the floor.
I think a more direct route is to have the neighbors have your phone number so that they can contact you directly as well as calling 311. Because I think you, you're, you're a longtime family-owned business here in Evanston. You want to stay here. I think that helping the neighbors have a quiet evening of sleep is really important. I think finding out directly from the neighbors that their, their trucks in violation of your policy is the best way for you to find, get the information.
Yeah, no, I, I, I would agree. I, I would still, I, I would still, um, you know, the, the police will be able to get the truck off the premises if it's overnight or something like that quicker than I could. But yeah, I, I would be, um, you know, we, I've not had neighbors reach out to us directly in the past. When I was younger, I think that was the thing that happened more often. But, you know, I would certainly be willing to establish a line of communication so that they could reach us directly.
Can I get clarity from residents whether or not, or can someone ask for clarity?
There's still somebody, I mean, everybody gets an equal, nine, nine people in the council. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to see how we can support the residents here and, you know, take into consideration the business. But I know from two years here with the issues of trucks idling in front of the 7-Eleven on Algen, at the Sherman and, Sherman and Algen, the complaints from neighbors, I would say on average, probably 12 email exchanges we've since elected for two years and they run down, there are different people that run down to talk to the truck drivers. We've had so many meetings with the management of the linked building. So yes, I agree with you and I think it would be nice if Troy would share his, you know, phone number. I think you're absolutely right. He should know about this. But I would say as a representative, if you can do something to, if we can do something so that we don't. And EPD has been wonderful, traffic's been wonderful and responding to this, so. But again, you know, you have to be there at the moment and it's just, it is literally like a dozen email exchanges. Every week we have residents talking to truck drivers. Some are great, sometimes it gets better for a week, but it goes on and on. So if there's something that can be done to really permanently reduce this traffic, I, I think we should look at doing that. Thank you.
So at this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we'll go back to Councilmember Burns with 2:15 left.
Yeah, I was just, you know, on that last point, I think if we're going to develop a policy that impacts all businesses that find themselves near residential districts, impacting residential districts, that's one thing. And certainly something that, that I would support us looking into. That's not the policy in front of us. And so, again, I, I, the reason why I support a table or a hold is because I, I, I do think there's enough here, as Councilmember Reed said, obviously this is something that the neighbors have experienced for a while. I do think there's enough here that warrants us keeping an eye on this and it not having to go back through, you know, the referrals process to be reconsidered. But again, I, I think it would be incredibly helpful for neighbors either to reach out through 911 or 311 or to Councilmember Wen's point directly to the, to the business. And, and I think with that direct line of communication, much of this will be, will, will be settled. I really believe that having, again, gone to the site and, and had a chance to understand what we're dealing with over here. And so, and then also wanted to say, it, it's, again, to me, it's not just the idling. It's also somebody being able to go there and just verify that there's a truck there. Whether they can wait five minutes or not, which, you know, depending on the time and, and the amount of calls we have at that time, you know, they may be able to sit there and wait five minutes. But even if they can't, we can at least have that patrol officer register, yes, there was a truck here at, you know, 3:00 AM idling or whatever it is, or whatever time it, it may be. But, but again, I, I think there's enough here to support a hold. The business recently has made some changes. I think we should allow some time to see if there's some improvement. And as Councilmember Reed kind of suggested earlier, there might be some other, you know, more permanent solutions that, that we can work on, you know, during that interim period if, if we're not able to, to, to see any improvements.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on the motion? And this is the motion to table this to the first June meeting.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddikatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and this item is tabled to the first meeting in June 2024. This brings us now to item HS1. Councilmember Revel?
Uh, yes, I move ordinance 74-0-23, amending Title III, Chapter 14. And this would be to specifically ban the sale of only, only flavored e-cigarettes or products, including menthol, but it not, it's not the full comprehensive tobacco product ban.
Second. Councilmember Revel moves passage of ordinance 74-0-23 for introduction. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Revel followed by Reed.
Well, now I'd like, now that we have that protocol taken care of, I'd like to move a substitute amendment to introduce basically what was the original version of the ordinance back in June. Ordinance 74-0-23, amending Title III, Chapter 14 to ban the sale of flavored tobacco products. And this would be as it appears, beginning on page 399 of our meeting packet. And I'll just, let me send that off to everybody. So I, I think we heard very eloquently this evening from a number of.
So just before, so I want to state the motion. So Councilmember Revel moves that we substitute this with essentially the original version, which appears in the packet, starting on page 399. Councilmember Wen seconds. And now carry on, Councilmember Revel.
Right. Well, we heard, I think, very eloquently from a number of speakers this evening about the importance of having it, this be a true comprehensive ban on all tobacco products. And in particular, I think it's been interesting to, the more we come back and talk about this to learn more about tobacco products. And I hadn't realized that cigars were such, flavored cigars were such a big deal for young people. But cigars are the second most popular tobacco product among youth after e-cigarettes. So I think making sure that we have a comprehensive ban that covers all the different options out there is where our community should be.
So Councilmember Reed followed by Saffredin followed by Nusma.
Thank you. I, okay. So one, I am proud to have been the lead sponsor of this ordinance and to have been joined by Councilmember Haddikatis and Councilmember Revel in bringing forward a policy that would, in the.
a policy that would, um, in the sale of e-cigarettes, flavored e-cigarettes in our community and in the sale of menthol cigarettes, which specifically with menthol cigarettes, the, um, our, our health officials at the federal level have been urging, um, have, have made clear the impacts of, of menthol cigarette smoking, tobacco smoking, and particularly the, the negative impacts for the black community. I am, I, I want us to be, this is a council that has often said they are concerned about our business community. Um, and in many cases, I have consistently said, well, if the business, if their model means that it's causing harm to our community, you know, to darn with them. Uh, you know, if, if we're going to lose a business because they're harming our community, we're going to lose a business because they're, they're harming our community and, and I'm perfectly fine in most cases in acting law. I, I just want us to, 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 to take that in mind, though. There are businesses that may close in our community when we enact this. Tobacco is a significant source of revenue for a number of our businesses. And certainly tobacco has a, uh, has terrible health impacts on individuals, so does alcohol. Tobacco worse than alcohol, but worse than tobacco might be sugar. We have more folks who die from diabetes and other sugar-related illnesses than tobacco. Um, and I just want us to keep that in mind and be consistent in the way that we apply policy. Um, I think it is, you know, I, I think we should understand the, again, I, I, tonight, I think I'm going to, I'm going to support it, but I think we need, it's only for introduction, but I think we need to understand what the budget impacts will be, right? We're, we're looking to fill a $3 million hole. What do we bring in annually in tobacco tax revenue? And when we cut off menthol, e-cigarettes, and all other flavored tobacco products, what impact is that going to have on our budget? And should we make, you know, and, and again, I prioritize public health over our, our finances, but I think we should be aware of what that impact is and account for that in our, in our budgeting practices and also account for it in understanding what businesses may or may not close in our community because of this, um, this, this drastic change, which is somewhat unexpected. So, uh, one question, when, uh, I forget, and as the sponsor, I should know this, when does this, when do we have in the ordinance that this would take effect? Is this a six-month, are we following the Harris rule that we're given at least six months?
Yeah, April 1st, 2024.
Okay. Um, and, and, and so that, that's helpful, but I, I do go back to the other questions of, of having our budget team look at this, understanding the, the impacts on our budget and, and making a decision with all of the relevant information at hand, as Councilmember Nusma pointed out earlier. So I, I think we need more information on this. I don't know if we have to hold it now. Um, I think we can move forward with introduction as long as we have that information, um, in three weeks. Uh, so, yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Saffredin followed by Nusma.
Thing was, what is the policy objective? Are we aiming to prevent youth sales or are we looking to influence the behavior of adults? I don't know if that's, I don't know who the sponsor is at this point, if that's Councilmember Revel, Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, the, the, the original proposal was meant to target youth sales. Uh, I, I will note that, you know, with these flavored e-cigarettes, it is close to 10% of youth, uh, according to an FDA study from 2022 that are using these. When you look at other flavored tobacco products, yes, flavored cigars comes in second place, but it jumps from 10% to about 1%. Um, so the, it's a, it's a pretty big gap and then you look at hookah and it's less than 1% of youth. Uh, and so, um, yes, the idea was to, to control youth consumption and to cut off the, the things that are predominantly impacting youth, as well as with menthol cigarettes, um, with adults in the African-American community, which, uh, federal organizations have recommended the ban of that.
Councilmember, I think Ms. Meyer from the Health Department is also wanted, approaching the dais.
Yeah, um, I, I, thank you, um, good evening, council. Um, I, I just want to reiterate, yes, that the, um, objective of this, of this policy is to prevent initiation of tobacco utilization among our youth in Evanston and we have the chance to be public health leaders for the state. We know that, um, we've set precedent for tobacco policy time and time again in Evanston and we have the chance to do this again. I would also just, um, you know, emphasize that, uh, to, to really manage feasibility of this policy, we really do need a comprehensive ban. Um, it's going to be very hard to, to pick and choose which tobacco products we do enforce and, um, it's, it's just going to be very difficult for our health inspectors. Um, and we know that a tactic of the tobacco industry is to create new products that do skirt the regulations. Um, and then finally, Alderman, Reed had a question about, um, tax revenue implications. We do have those numbers, um, based on reports from our tobacco retailers themselves, that estimated, um, reduced revenue would be roughly maybe $100,000 a year.
What percentage of the overall, point of information?
Hold on, so Councilmember Saffredin still has the floor.
Have any of the iterations of, uh, this policy had increased penalties for sales to people under age or increased enforcement of the prohibition on sales to people who are underaged?
I, I can repeat the question, it was hard to, so what he's asking is, if the goal is to get at youth utilization, has any, have any version of this that's been considered throughout the process considered enhanced enforcement, perhaps through penalties, of the existing Tobacco 21 policy?
I, I can, I can take this one. Um, yes, so with this revised ordinance, we've put in place penalties for a violation of this, uh, ordinance ranging from $500 to $2,500, even a revocation of the license in order to strengthen our ordinance and discourage this practice. So it is included in the revised ordinance, the penalties associated with a violation.
But the, the ordinance that's proposed would prohibit sales to anybody, including people over the age of 21, not just people under the age of 21, correct?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I don't think that adult residents of Evanston look to the ten of us to regulate their behavior in a way that maybe this council thinks that they do. Uh, I, I support anything that enhances penalties or enforcement for underage tobacco sales, but I think that we're making a mistake in assuming that adults need us to tell them what legal products they can and can't consume or purchase in the city of Evanston. Uh, I, I don't understand how this goes with some of the other proposals relating to the indoor consumption of cannabis or legalization of mushrooms. I, I, I'm not sure that we're being consistent in our policies. I know there's been a proposal to allow hookah lounges. I mean, I, I, again, I support anything that will, uh, enhance penalties and enforcement of underage sales of tobacco products, but I think we're going too far when we prohibit sales of illegal product to adults, uh, who can legally purchase them in the state of Illinois. And so, uh, for that reason, I'm going to vote no on this, but I would support anything that would increase the penalty and increase funding for enforcement on underage sales.
If I could just address that, the, the thinking behind restricting retailers is that we, we do know that proximity of, of tobacco products, um, you know, really impacts our, our youth the most. Um, the, the reality is that Evanston adults would be able to, of course, drive to other communities to purchase these, um, products. However, this policy really would, um, prevent youth from adopting these, uh, behaviors in the first place, um, by buying them, you know, within, within walking distance of their, of their community.
That you could drive or ride their bikes to other communities as well. I, I, again, I just, I think that we're talking about illegal products for people over the age of 21. Uh, and if our goal is to keep it out of the hands of people under the age of 21, there are other ways to do that, short of a complete ban of illegal products in, within the city of Evanston. And to Councilmember Reed's point, uh, we don't have a complete understanding of what the impact would be on specific businesses as well. So again, if, if, if the goal is to limit access to these products by people under the age of 21, I don't think that that is, I, I think that can be achieved in a much more narrow policy than what is being proposed, uh, tonight.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's getting late, so I'll keep it short. Uh, I'm going to vote yes on the revised motion. Smoking is bad. We know it's bad. Yeah, one of our six city council goals is public health. Uh, I agree with Councilmember Reed that I would prioritize public health over economic development, which is another one of our city council goals. We're going to often be asked to make judgment calls, to choose between conflicting goals, and in this case, the choice is not that difficult for me. Thanks.
At this time, nobody is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to second cracks, beginning with Councilmember Revel with three minutes and 45 seconds left.
Right. Um, just to follow up on Councilmember Nusma's mention of our public goals, and one of the specific objectives that we identified was to reduce citywide smoking rates from 12.6% to 10%. So we are really increasing our focus on, on smoking. Um, I, I think I'm going to ask Director Ogbo, I, I have another amendment to make to the amendment, which I think is still in order. So apparently after Massachusetts and California enacted bans on flavored tobacco products, including bans on menthol flavored products, in response, the tobacco industry began to use synthetic cooling agents, which escaped the definition of menthol flavored products. So, um, I have an amendment to, let me just quickly send it to you all. And so I would add another, basically paragraph to the definition of flavored tobacco, and it would read, "Means any tobacco product that contains a cooling or numbing sensation distinguishable by an ordinary consumer during the consumption of such tobacco products that imparts a cooling or numbing sensation. This includes, but is not limited to, public statements that a product has a minty or cooling effect, such as describing the product as chill, ice, fresh, arctic, or frost."
Councilmember Revel moves to amend the substitute motion to add the just-read words to section 13 dash 14, sorry, section 3 dash 14 dash 1, uh, expanding the definition of flavored tobacco. Councilmember Nusma seconds.
Point of order. I'm wondering if we could, are, are we voting on, are you combining that into one super motion or are you separating those two out?
As I, as the chair understood it, this was an amendment to the substitute motion, which would then trigger a vote on the amendment, which, after which, pass or fail, there would be a, a vote on the amended or unamended substitute motion.
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Revel, you still have the floor, um, and there's one light on, that's Councilmember Reed. Did you want to speak to the amendment or do you want to speak after the amendment?
I want to speak to the amendment.
Okay, one second then, let me, um, so in that case, um, uh, again, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go to Councilmember Reed with a minute, 10 seconds left.
Yes, uh, quick question. So then, a hundred thousand, where the staff, where did, oh, there we go. Okay. Um, what does a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars represent as a percentage of our overall tobacco tax revenue?
So I did a phone survey with all tobacco retailers in Evanston who, who were willing to speak with me, um, and then based on their estimated percentage of sales that were flavored tobacco, um, we then got the number that if we banned flavored, um, tobacco, then we would have reduction of, um, tax revenue from 84,000 to 112,000, somewhere in there.
What is the percentage of?
Um, I think that was based on about 50%.
So we'd have a 50% reduction in tobacco revenue. Okay. Um, I, I will close it here because I know my time is coming up. Um, I, I would say, I, I, I think we need to celebrate the initial proposal, which is a ban on, um, all e-flavored, uh, cigarettes or flavored e-cigarettes and menthol cigarettes as doing what we need to do. That will have a tremendous impact on our city. Um, I, I think that if folks want to go further than what the initial, uh, uh, referral was, that a separate referral can be made. Um, I, I'm looking at faces and I'm counting votes potentially, and I don't know if there are the votes to, to take this next step, to, to amend the ordinance, uh, to, to exclude all flavored tobacco products. I, I, I think that, um, you know, I would be supportive of the second referral that Councilmember Revel made, or the second amendment that Councilmember Revel made. Um, I'll also note that, um, lastly, I, I don't understand what would be difficult about, about enforcing this. I mean, if we're banning e-flavored e-cigarettes, and please respond, I will close out here, but if you can respond, um, what, what the challenges are, because flavored e-cigarettes, it's clear what a flavored e-cigarette is, and if you go in there and you see them, you find them. Um, and the same thing with menthol cigarettes. We know what menthol cigarettes look like and what the packaging says. I agree with Councilmember Revel's secondary amendment, but again, that doesn't seem like there's difficulty implementing that versus flavored cigar products. That's a very clear, you know, differentiation between the two. Um, so I would encourage us to move forward with the initial proposal and to interrogate and investigate the, the second part of it that Councilmember Revel is suggesting. Um, and so I would, I would encourage a no vote to the amendment here, although I, I would vote for the second part of the amendment.
So, uh, seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the role on the amendment, um, on the amendment?
The, the, the additional definition amendment.
Exactly.
Right. Councilmember Saffredin?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hara Gattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Uh, no.
With five voting in favor and four voting against, the motion carries and the substitute motion is amended to, with the expansion previously described. Now, will the clerk please take the role on the underlying, now amended substitute motion?
Councilmember Saffredin?
No. No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Hara Gattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
With six voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries and the substitute, uh, the amended substitute, uh, version of ordinance 74-0-23 passes for introduction and will be on our agenda for action, uh, on, in three weeks on November 13th. Uh, now to item HS2. Councilmember Revel?
Yes, um, I move, uh, introduction of ordinance 77-0-23, amending Title III of the Evanston City Code to add Chapter 35, minimum wage.
Second. Councilmember Revel moves passage for introduction of ordinance 77-0-23. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Um, I'm going to steal a bit of work that Councilmember Nusma already did, which was send, uh, the text in, virtually, so I'm going to pair off yours, uh, which I'm, I'm going to move to, we've received a number of comments from our business community and they have shared, uh, some concerns around, uh, the minimum wage increase. I think some of the concerns are sensible and while others, um, merit more discussion and ultimately I, I think my decision is not to support those. But, um, of the, um, request that the business community has made, they've made three requests, one being that- being that we tie this to our Fair Work Week ordinance, where the, the second tier of minimum wage, the higher minimum wage, would only apply to businesses currently in the ordinance with 51 or more employees. The business community is asking for that to mirror the Fair Work Week ordinance and be 100 employees or more. I am perfectly fine going in that direction. I think it creates some parity and some clarity about rules. So with that in mind, I will first move that we amend this to move the threshold for the higher tier of minimum wa, uh, the higher tier up to 100 employees rather than 51.
And for those of us who are checking email, that's item two in Councilmember Newsma's email?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed moves to amend this ordinance to change the tiers. One would be for 4 to 99 employees, one would be for 100 or more employees. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the role on this amendment?
Councilmember Saffredin?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance 77-0-23 is amended. Now, Councilmember Reed?
Yes, now that brings us to the last two requests that the business community has made, which, one is eliminating the, the wage increase for folks who are under the age of 18. And, you know, I have a few responses to that, right? I, I believe in equal work, equal pay, right? If you're doing the job, you deserve the pay. Just because you're younger doesn't mean, and if you're do, if you're younger and doing the job, you're doing the job, you deserve the pay that everyone else gets. Are we going to say that we wouldn't have an equal minimum wage for seniors who may have some mobility issues and can't perform duties as well as someone who's younger? Would we say that for pregnant women, that they don't deserve the same minimum wage as everyone else, because maybe they can't lift a box as heavy as, as someone else, or they have to take time off? And so, again, equal work, equal pay. This is a, a clear principle of fairness, and we should not discriminate against people purely on their age. And then, this is about economic independence for young folks. Many young, young people work to support their families and save for future expenses, such as college tuition reduced, such as college tuition, and a reduced wage can hinder their ability to contribute financially to their own success, and necessitate working longer hours in order to make up that wage difference, which could take away from their education and other important developmental activities. And, you know, and additionally, offering a full minimum wage can teach young workers the value of money and the responsibility of setting a positive precedent for their future work. And then, next, I'll go on to incentivizing young workers. If younger individuals know that they are paid less than their older colleagues for the same work, they might be discouraged from entering the workforce early, workforce early on, and this could delay the development of their work ethic and professional skills and experience. So I believe firmly that we need to keep the equal pay for equal work provision here in this ordinance for young folks. Secondly, about, the business community is also saying that we should eliminate the automatic adjustments based on CPI, or that set percentage of 2.5%. You know, first, we, we have to consider inflation and purchasing power. We know, all of us know here, that the purchasing power of the dollar rose over time due to inflation. And a minimum wage that has to be, that isn't adjusted periodically means that effectively earners, workers earn less in real terms, even if their nominal wage remains the same. And so tying increases to the CPI ensures that minimum wage keeps pace with inflation, preserving the purchasing power of minimum wage earners. And then this also creates predictability for businesses. Automatic adjustments, automatic adjustments provide businesses with a predictable schedule for wage increases, allowing them to plan and budget more effectively. This contrasts with unpredictable and potentially large jumps in the minimum wage, as we're seeing now, which can be challenging for businesses to adapt to in a short period of time. And that is why we need to just, and then, so lastly, I'll go to avoiding political battles. We don't want to set ourselves up to, for every couple of years, having to come back, and I will wrap up here shortly, having to come back and have a political battle about increasing the minimum wage. And so by setting that, it will provide predictability for business, avoid political battles unnecessarily. And by capping that increase at the lower of CPI, or 2.5%, again, whichever is lower, it ensures that while wages, that while wages grow with the economy, there is no reasonable limit to that growth, striking a clear balance between helping workers and ensuring businesses can absorb the increases. So thank you.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to speak to the youth wage, and I am going to make a motion to strike section 335-4 in its entirety, which would eliminate the minimum wage requirement for youth employees, and leave it at, if I'm understanding this correctly, at $15 an hour.
It would essentially revert to, we'd have to add a section reverting it to the county's minimum wage.
Right, which, which would apply anyway. I don't think we would have to do that. So if, if a youth is making $15 an hour, that is 97% of what a small employer would pay, or 92% of what a large employer would pay. So that is, you know, hardly sweatshop wages, and, you know, I am interested in more kids having a chance to work, and, and I am accepting the suggestion from the restaurant industry that allowing them to pay the youth slightly less will allow them to hire more youth, and that's something I'd like to encourage. So I am going to, I'm going to make that motion.
Just point of, a second, but point of information for clarity. I'm sorry?
Did you just?
Yes, I seconded. I'm sorry, I don't, I seconded it for discussion, I'm sorry. I figured it was going to get a second, I was giving it for a discussion, I don't support it. And if no one else will second, then I remove my second. But point of information, so I withdraw my second, but, okay.
All right, so Councilmember Newsma moves to amend ordinance 77-0-23, to, by striking section 35, 3-35-4, in its entirety? Is that correct? Councilmember Revelle seconds.
And also point out that, you know, this is a minimum wage, and employer is not obligated to pay anybody this amount. If they have adults and 16, 17-year-olds doing the same job, I would hope they would pay them the same amount. The law doesn't require that, of course, but certainly, it doesn't require that they pay them less.
Point of information for clarity, because I think you misspoke there. So your assumption is that if we were to remove this, that the minimum wage for a youth worker would be $15 an hour? Is that what I heard? And, and I'm curious where you're getting that from, because that's certainly not what's in the county ordinance.
You are correct, I'm looking at the Chicago line here.
So, so it would be, it wouldn't be 90 some odd percent of the, the general wage, it'd be much, much lower than that. And then, second point of information, I want to, go ahead, go ahead.
So, so, Councilmember?
I stand corrected on the math. Councilmember Reed makes a good point, but I maintain my, my position.
Another point of information, because I think this is critical, Mayor, and this is-
But other people are on city council also.
Well, he's making a motion, and we're going to have a discussion that is meaningless if, if we're not clear on what this motion means. And so just, just a point of, or point of information for legal, by removing this language, my understanding is this wouldn't necessarily eliminate the youth, it would still, the minimum wage would still be what the minimum wage is. I think we provided this language to provide clarity for the youth minimum wage, but our ordinance would conflict with the county ordinance, and thereby, in my understanding, would just set the minimum wage at whatever we set it at, but would not automatically revert our minimum wage to, for youth, to the youth minimum wage set by the county, because there is a conflict here. And similarly, we had to make that amendment for, when we removed the minimum wage for the subminimum wage for restaurant workers, for tipped workers. When we removed that, we had to replace it with language that said tipped workers will receive the wage that is set by the county ordinance, because if we had just removed the language there, it would automatically revert to the just unified minimum wage that we've set in this ordinance. So I guess the question is for legal to provide, if I'm on the right track with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed, Alexander Rugby Interim Corporation Council. I, I do agree, I think that if the ordinance is silence, silent on a minimum wage for youth, it would revert to the minimum wage in the general ordinance if it's higher than the county minimum wage. If it's higher than the county minimum wage, our ordinance will control, because it has stricter requirements. Otherwise, if we're silent, and we don't speak to a minimum wage in general at all, then it would revert to the county. So I think if we want the county to apply, we could simply insert language to specify that. And I think, just to clarify, would probably be best for everyone moving forward.
And it, should it just let you move forward? I knew that was the truth.
Is there a second to the motion? Let's start there.
There was, Councilmember Revelle seconded.
Got it, okay. Councilmember Herakakis?
This is a question for corporate counsel. When they say youth, is it always 17 or lower? Is that specified by county ordinance?
I would have to look at the county ordinance, I'm not sure how they define youth, but it should be specifically defined here in the city's ordinance.
But are we using, so, so for Councilmember Newsma?
We need to clarify.
Yes, so personally, I think I agree with Councilmember Reed with equal work, equal pay. If you're 16 years old, you have a license, you can drive to work, you should be paid the same rate. I know that, in doing a little bit of research on my own, it seems like you can get a work permit at a younger age. I would be comfortable in anyone under 16 who needs to get a work permit, that's a special situation, I would be comfortable with them potentially being paid less, but personally, anything, if you're over 16, I think it should be the same as, as an adult.
So this time, no one else is requesting to speak, but I just want to, in light of the corporation counsel's input, Councilmember Newsma, do you want to adjust your motion before a vote would occur?
Yeah, I do. The question is, to what?
I can offer a suggestion, even though I don't support this. The, the suggestion would be that, that for the youth minimum wage, it says that, it would say that our, our, and corporation counsel can clean this up, but it would say that the standard would be that we'd follow the county ordinance.
Right, which, in 2023, if I'm understanding correctly, was 1370 for non-tipped workers, for 24, with, with that increase, it would be just over $14. So I'm going to amend my motion to replace 335-4, paragraph A, which currently says, beginning on July 1st, 2024, $15 an hour, to strike $15 an hour and insert the Cook County language. I think that is-
I think you're reading from the wrong one, because you're saying $15 an hour, which is the Chicago ordinance.
Yeah, I'm on page 415 of 445 of our package.
So do, can you put this, I mean, I think this is a poster child situation for why we should put stuff in writing.
May I ask for a friendly amendment to that, since, since you are putting this in writing?
Yeah.
Friendly amendment would be that either you go with Councilmember Herakakis's request, or that this would only apply, this, this, that we kind of strike all of this, and only for businesses with the 100 or more employees, or really, that only for businesses with 99 or fewer employees, this lower minimum wage for youth workers would apply. So that helps our small businesses, but the Targets, the Best Buys, the Jewels, they can, they can pay a full minimum wage to, to youth workers. And so I would, I would encourage that amendment. I'm seeing some head shaking, yes? Okay, good.
Okay, which is more surgery on an ordinance than is appropriate to do on the fly, I am afraid.
Well, this is for introduction.
I mean, there's a few options. One option is to withdraw your motion altogether, and accept the fact that it's for introduction, not worry about it. One option is to hold it or table it.
Don't do either of those. The last two.
It's interesting that you would like to get this one done, and that previous one has been going on for a year and a half.
I guess what I would like to get done is this meeting.
Yes.
So if, if you could, if you could make a choice, and-
This is, this is more, more of an amendment that I'm comfortable doing on the fly, so I would, I'm comfortable moving this forward, withdrawing my motion, moving this forward as is for introduction, but just telegraphing that between now and the next meeting for action, I'll be coming up with language that matches the consensus of this discussion.
I'll be happy to support it.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, this is a very consequential decision for workers and for businesses. Can we make sure that we get this right before we move forward with it? I'm not looking to delay it unnecessarily, but I think anybody who watches the amount of operation that's happening right now wouldn't say that we're coming up with a well thought out, easy to follow ordinance for businesses or for workers.
I mean, Councilmember, I would say if you are interested in making a motion to hold or table, that motion is in order.
I need to hold this until our next meeting, where it can be rough introduction in a more complete, comprehensive form.
Sorry, can you, I just, I misheard the most important word.
I need to hold this till our next meeting, and my hope is that we would bring it forward in a more comprehensive, complete form, as a platform for discussion.
So Councilmember Saffredin moves to hold this item. Councilmember Kelly seconds, because the motion to hold was seconded, the item will be held, and will appear once again for introduction on the November 13th city council meeting. I think the suggestion is a good one, that this is complicated, and it's really important to do this well, and so let's, you know, those, those who are looking to make amendments, just, you know, bring, bring the kind of polished amendments to that meeting for consideration.
And so just as a point of order, we have approved the first amendment, which was to adjust the tiers.
That's correct. So it will appear on the November 13th agenda for introduction with the new tiers.
Right. Allowing us more time to fully and better express additional amendments.
I mean, there's, there's actually two other items in your email, and so either or both of those could be brought forth in a polished version as amendments at that time.
Right, but they would not be in the draft that comes to council.
Right, but what, what you'll see in, in the draft that comes to council will be exactly what there is today, with the exception of the amendment that's like item two in your email, which will be reflected, because it was passed.
Got it.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I, I, I am interested in a motion to overturn the hold, and I think that is something that is debatable. I, I want to clarify that what we're talking about isn't as complex as folks are saying. The only amendment, the amendment that Councilmember Newsma put forward would simply say that the youth minimum wage would not apply, hold on, if I can just finish my sentence here, would not apply to work, to, to workforces, to industries that have less than, or employers who have less than 100 employees. So it's not super complex there.
The move, motion to overturn the hold is in order. So Councilmember Reed moves to overturn the hold, is there a second?
And, and this would allow us to actually bring back an, an ordinance that, that is clearer than, than what we're talking, and I don't even think Councilmember Newsma is looking to make the last amendment around CPI.
We haven't gotten to that one yet.
We haven't gotten to that one yet, but I don't, maybe, maybe you are, maybe you aren't.
So, the motion fails for lack of a second, so the hold stands. Councilmember Revelle on item HS3.
Yes, I move ordinance 98-0-23, amending city code section 9-5-8, gambling, to provide exceptions to the gambling prohibition.
Second.
Councilmember Revelle moves passive- Councilmember Revel moves passage of ordinance 98-0-23 for introduction. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Saffredin?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 98-0-23 is passed for introduction and will be on the November 13th agenda for action. This brings us now to call of the wards. Councilmember Saffredin?
November 1st, at Chandler, Councilmember Revel and I will be having a, a meeting to discuss the budget. And I believe tomorrow is a, a meeting with the representatives from the Assessors Office to discuss the impact of taxes on properties in Evanston.
Councilmember Revel. Oh, sorry. I apologize. Go ahead, Councilmember.
I was gonna say, that was it. Have a pleasant evening, everybody.
Okay. Councilmember Revel?
Uh-huh.
I think your mic is off.
I'm sorry. The meeting on November 1st is at 6:00 PM at Chandler.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes. Few announcements. So tomorrow, we are having Eighth Ward Open Office, a virtual open office, and folks can join us at 1:00 PM tomorrow, virtually during the lunch hour. We will have our ward meeting, which is a joint ward meeting with Councilmember Burns of the Fifth Ward, which will be held hybrid at the Robert Crown and virtually. Folks can join that. And then, I, I just really would, you know, I had a, I put forward a couple of questions in the budget hearing earlier that it didn't get answered, particularly I've been asking for weeks about the impact on rental properties. And so I, I just really want to get an estimate of what the increase will be on rental properties. And I'd like to get also an estimate of, you know, we're looking at the school board increasing property taxes. We're looking at the library, the city, potentially, hopefully not the city, and, and other units of government increasing property taxes. I, I'd like to know holistically what is a taxpayer looking at paying, including with the other rate increases that we're looking at, such as the water rate and trash collection rate. I think if we, and, and we should see whether that combination of increases outpaces inflation or not, or really just understand what the impact on residents will be holistically, rather than looking at each of these individually, as if, again, as Councilmember Saffredin mentioned, the same time, as if this isn't hitting the same folks multiple times.
Councilor Hadda Gaddis?
So this Thursday, I will, myself and Clerk Mendoza will be at the Spanish-language Budget Town Hall here at the Civic Center, at the Glacier Room. Then, on the 7th, there will be a combined Third, Fourth, and Ninth Ward Meeting to discuss the budget, and that is at Robert Crown. Then, on Friday, the 10th, Ninth Ward Office Hours at Reprise Roasters from 9 till 11. Thanks.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. I invite everyone to join us this Wednesday for an important discussion about tax-exempt property with Christina Lynch, the Director of Legal at Cook County Assessors Office, Wednesday, 7:00 PM in the parasol room. That's, and also a ward meeting for the First Ward on Thurs, on Thursday, this Thursday at 7:00 PM on Zoom. Thank you.
Councilwoman Harris?
Thank you so much. I first want to say happy birthday to Councilmember Reed. Today is his birthday. So happy birthday, Councilmember Reed. I will not sing for you. And then tomorrow, I have Second Ward, Second to None, Count, Ward Meeting at Robert Crown, 6:30 PM.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes. Just another reminder of the joint ward meetings of the Ninth, Third, and Fourth Wards on November 7th at 7:00 PM, Robert Crown. But I also wanted to thank all of my colleagues tonight for your support in doing something that actually got no mention whatsoever. We created 60 affordable units of housing tonight.
Woo!
Yeah. And it's not in the Fifth Ward. So I, I want to thank everyone who worked on this, particularly the staff, because it's a long time coming. But I hope that that gets some good press, Bob.
Woo!
Okay. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
I will also remind everyone that the 60 units of affordable housing are going to be fully CARP compliant and all-electric buildings. So if, if we can do it, anybody can do it. Again, Tuesday, the 7th, is the joint ward meeting focused on the budget at a 7 o'clock, Robert Crown. Next, Fourth Ward Office Hours will be Saturday, the 11th, from 10 to noon at Reprise Roasters. And then, if I could ask the, the local press in helping to get the word out to Fourth Ward residents nearby Gray Park or Albany Care, if you would like to be part of a neighborhood discussion focused on ongoing issues at Albany Care, please reach out to me directly, and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, I also want to announce a, a joint Fifth and Eighth Ward Budget Meeting. It'll be held on the, on the same day as, as our usual Fifth Ward meetings, the last Thursday of the month, so this Thursday, October 26th. But it'll be at 6:00 PM. Instead of 7:00 PM, we'll have a hybrid option, so you can join in person at Robert Crown, or we'll also have a link available on the city, city calendar for you to tune in virtually. Also, very excited about the 60 new affordable housing units in the Third Ward. And I know Councilmember Nguyen didn't, didn't mean it in this way, but I think it's important to make sure that community members don't get away with treating affordable housing like a waste transfer station. Like it's something that, 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 like, the more isn't the merrier. It is. We need this more in the Fifth Ward, more in the Third, and Fourth, First, and Second, and in every ward in the city. This is a fundamental need in, is in terms of providing shelter that people need and deserve. And, and I'm always going to be of the opinion that the more the merrier, but I'm incredibly excited about what we've been able to, to add to the, to the Third Ward this evening. And the last thing I want to mention is, is participatory budgeting. I came on the meeting a bit late, didn't have an opportunity to speak to that issue, but I, I expressed this to counsel at, at some point, can't remember if it was in closed session or not, but that when I went to an ICMA conference, I think this was the one in Columbus, Ohio, there were a few cities, I think two in particular, that were invited to talk about the equity work that they were doing in the city. And all the cities that were invited out to speak about equity all had a, had a regular participatory budgeting program. And, and I think the reason why that was the case is because with equity, you have to, it has to be reflected in the budget, right? You, you have to show that there's a commitment to, to equity by making sure it's reflected in the budget. And I, I think too, equity fundamentally is about sharing power. And so the fact that some of my colleagues here in Evanston and other elected officials and other places that are considering PB programs get uncomfortable means that we're headed in the right direction, because it is about thinking about how to share power, how to share influence, different than, than we're used to. And so I think we're headed in the right direction by having that conversation, and, and I would appreciate if we could find a way, work together to find a way to continue to be PB to some degree. And we'll, you know, I'll be working with the PB folks and, and others to try to come up with a plan. And that's all. Chair, thank you.
Councilmember Nusma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120 slash 2C, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding workers' compensation and minutes review. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C 12 and 21.
Councilmember Nusman moves the city council move into an executive session to discuss the just-read items. Councilmember Harris, second. Seeing a discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And at 10:07 PM, the city council resolves into an executive session to begin immediately in the council library.